2019 capital budget for the city of Temple. At this time, we'll ask Mr. Bill Auger to provide to us the purpose of the public hearing.
We have in our city charter that we have to present. I have to present as the city administrator both a capital budget as well as an operating budget to you, the elected officials, and that is what we are starting tonight. Tonight, we will be presenting the capital budget for 2019. Yes, of course, does not contain any surprises to you as elected official, because we've been discussing with you and to get it into shape, to be able to present it tonight at this public hearing. If you were to be looking at your budget calendar, you will see that we talk about a second public hearing on the capital budget taking place next month prior to your regular monthly meeting. We will not be having a public hearing then. It will actually be shortly before your December meeting when you would be adopting this. Your charter says that we have to present a capital budget to you at least 60 days before the end of the fiscal year. And of course, we're within that range. And then for our operating budget, it's a shorter period of time. We'll talk about that in another meeting. But tonight is the opportunity for the budget to be presented, not so much to you, the elected officials, but to the public. And of course, at this point, we're looking around. We've got about three or four members of the public here. Also, it is being so that we build a website. And what I'd like to do, Mr. Mayor, is before we turn it over to Cynthia Guyer, we will be handling this presentation tonight, is that we do have with us a gentleman that you had chosen recently to be our finance director. We have Dr. Kenneth Abide who is here with us. He's here for three days, getting oriented, and then will be coming back to join us in a couple of weeks after he's given notice to his current employer. But those are all my remarks, so I'll turn it back over to you for anything you want to say before this guy starts taking this over.
All right. At this time, we come to the presentation of the proposed capital budget, and we call upon Ms. Cynthia Guyer to share that with us.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. The capital improvement program for the city of Temple, we created to help our city and our governing authority to identify major projects that are needed over time to improve the infrastructure and provide services to our community. The paperwork that you have before you, and if you didn't get one, they are available on the table. They consist of, first, the capital. I'm going to turn Mr. Mayor to get his documents. The first document that we want to look at is the capital improvements project worksheet. And this worksheet is created to identify the projects, to project the associated costs with those projects for proper budget planning, and to determine the funding source for which the city can use to complete these projects. The FY 2019 capital project worksheet has been provided to show you the projects that are currently being considered by our mayor council for next year. At this time, as you look through, you'll see the column Funding Source, and the majority of the projects for fiscal year 19 are funded by SLOST 2015. With the exception of the water system meter replacement program, and in that particular project, the mayor council earmarked $312,000 from the water fund from an investment PD to help with that project. So with the exception, the total project cost is $400,000. $312,000 will come from water funds, and the remaining $88,000 will come from SLOST 2015. I'd like to present, and if you'll review this, if you have any questions at the end of the public hearing on the project, I'll be happy to try to answer those. But in addition to the CIP worksheet, we also like to present to you the projected fiscal year 2019 SLOST 2015 budget. This SLOST 2015 budget is being limited because it is the primary source of funding for the majority of the capital budget this year. If you look with me under the FY 2019 column, you will see that revenues are projected to be received by the city of Temple in an amount of $645,000. This revenue will be received by the city between January and July of 2019. Our budget also shows that we will have a projected remaining balance from fiscal year 18 of approximately $865,000. That gives us a total budget for SLOST and capital of $1,510,000. The projected expenditures on the SLOST budget show a debt service payment that for the water sewer bond in the amount of $250,000. That will be made in a lump sum transfer to the debt service account. The remaining expenditures represent the funding for the capital projects that are listed on the worksheet for each of the departments within the city. The total debt payment and projected capital expenditures total $956,100. And that will leave us a projected balance of $553,900 in the 2015 SLOST fund at the end of fiscal year 2019. So that is our recommendation for the capital budget and the 2015 SLOST budget. At this time, does anyone have any questions? Mayor?
Thank you very much. Anyone from the public wish to offer any comments in regard to the budget as presented by Ms. Guyer? Okay. All right. Hearing none, seeing none. That brings us to closing remarks by elected officials, and would anyone on the elected official basis want to have anything to say regarding what's been shared? All right. At this time then, that brings us to adjournment of this public hearing. So without any interest shown by anyone to make remarks, we will adjourn the public hearing, and then we'll commence with the city council committees meeting at 5:30, about 21 minutes. Thank you very much.
I'd like to do a 5:30. It was just very general.
Mr. Grant said he wants to go.
I like those five. Don't give up with that.
I like my name.
Don't you?
Yes.
This is true. Any sound for you to start?
All right, ladies and gentlemen, today is our city council committees meeting for October 29, 2018. We'd like to call that to order. You will stand with us on the invitation of the pledge of allegiance. Stand with us, please. In God's name, we just thank you for this day. Thank you for the beautiful sunshine. Thank you for the privilege of serving this city and its citizens. And we pray for guidance, wisdom, knowledge, discernment as we go about in the business of this city. We pray you just help us to discuss matters in a civil way, that your name will be glorified and honored. We pray that you just bless each one here, bless those that are sick, restore their wellness, and those that are aggrieved over the loss of loved ones. We pray you give them comfort. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen?
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen. Before we approve the public's agenda, I'd just like to remind everyone that we will be entertaining a suspension of our committees meeting at about 6 o'clock to hold a special call meeting, and then we will, after that is completed and adjourned, we will return back to the committees meeting. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the published agenda for this day's city council meeting as presented.
Make a motion. We accept it.
Have a move in a second. All in favor, let it be known, saying aye. Any opposed, the same sign. All right. That brings us to the first area, Budget and Finance Committee. Chairwoman, Ms. Taryn Vivance.
Yes, sir. The only thing we're going to do is that number five, report from Raymond Jenkins and such. We're going to move that up to number one, and we're going to ask Mr. Camp, come on up and talk to us about that, please. So if you'll make that number one, and then just slide the rest of them down, I would appreciate that.
Great, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you for having me. I'm Bill Camp. We've met before, and I'm glad to be back with you. The purpose is just to kind of give you an update on how communications have gone with the authority. And just to summarize, on January 1, 2021, we have a very large principal campaign trying to do about 4.6 million. And so, a decision has been made that based on conditions as they are now, financing this outstanding debt and going out longer over time is in the city's best interest. So we started that process with the authority. And the authority has engaged a financial advisor on their part to help them with, you know, looking at the transaction from their side too. So the security of the bonds is the city's full faith and credit pledge. The issuer is the Carroll County Water Authority. So anyway, the plan that y'all come up with, they need to be comfortable with, and both parties will be approving the transaction. They've, the authority has given us some feedback on our original plans, and they're most comfortable with a more limited transaction. In other words, limited to the investor types that could buy this, purchase this bond from you all. And so, in that case, it would be what's called a private placement, no rating. The same legal structure would still be in place. In other words, an intergovernmental contract between the city and the authority to make sure the bondholder or bondholders gets paid. Also, there's a requirement to operate the water and sewer system to generate 1.05 times coverage. Those are the existing parameters, and that's what they continue to want to see in the new transaction as well. So obviously, the audit is in the works, and coming in November, I think that information would be useful in the marketing of the bonds and also communicating coverage issues with the authority. The authority's regular meetings are the third Thursday. So you're going to have one in November 15, but I think we need to think about hitting it in December. And so the idea would be to execute a transaction that fits with the authority's parameters. In other words, a private placement with a sophisticated type investors, no rating necessary, similar to your 2010 transaction. My advice is we're going to have a term long enough that we have good coverage, at least 105, 1.05, hopefully better. And I know that there's a desire to be able to get out of debt and pay this thing off as soon as 2028. And so, having, we may potentially have a longer final maturity date, and the hope would be to negotiate a feature to be able to pay off the debt early as revenues are That's the summary today. And I'm happy to answer any questions you all may have.
You say pay off the debt early. Would there be a penalty involved with that?
I hope not. I hope not. When we talked before about a rated public offering, one of the things I mentioned to you is we very standard have the ability to pay off bonds early at the 10-year mark without a penalty. And that would be ideal. That lack of penalty would be ideal. It just stands to be determined, or going through this placement process and negotiating those terms with the investors, that would be what I would want for you. But we just will have to see if that's available.
As you said, going a longer term, a term long than forward, you mentioned 1.05. How much past or how long past 2028?
I've run some numbers based on some indications, and I think that if we went out as much as 15 or 16 years, we'd have ample coverage. And so if we had that 10-year feature with a call there, we could pay it off six years early at 2028. Again, my hope, my advice is for us to do this and get the term long enough so that coverage is not a concern going forward. And we also, we're not projecting what revenues are going to be, but we can look back over recent history and look at, I think we're going in the right direction, but that's, I'd like for you to do this one time and top it in the head if you've done it. That's not a long term.
What's going on with the basis rates since you were here last?
They have gone up. Since August, I was looking at that, we talked in a while, they're up about 20 basis points. That's two tenths of a percent in this area of the curve, 1 to 15 years, generally up 20 basis points.
You gave us some scenarios last time you were here, and I think they're highs. I think that was 3.2.
That's a, the numbers I ran today, assuming that 20 basis point increase were about 3.16, 3.17, so we're close to that, yes, sir. We were at a 290, 45, I think, on the bond.
What procedure do you have to go through in order to get something locked in?
Okay. With this, we are going to go through a process with, again, sophisticated investors that are able to do their own due diligence. We're going to give them information about you, your audits, the coverage tables that I've run for you, and background about the original project. And then we'll go through a process where we're communicating with a lot of different banks, and based on our timetable of when the authority meets and when y'all convene, and with both parties need to adopt this thing, we would ask them for offers, and those offers could be locked in after y'all have taken action. Then there's a validation process that we go through, but they would know the date, the closing date, they would know your date that you're approving the documents, and so their rate would be known on that meeting day. That's generally how it works. So we take the lowest, you want to take not only the lowest interest rate, but also things like your call feature, or also the term of the thing because of the coverage. There's several different movement parts to help you determine, help us get y'all to determine what's the best overall transaction for the city. That also complies with the authority's request.
Will we meet with the Water Authority in December? Will they be meeting and voting on something that day or will they vote on it later today?
That's what we're asking them to do. That's right. Vote to approve that transaction the same day that y'all. Everybody would see what the final numbers are, and they would be asked to approve it. And I think that going to them at their regular, their regular meeting makes sense. Of course, we'll be communicating with them and giving them an update, and they have an advisor who is a proponent of this methodology. He's very familiar with how this works.
In talking with Mr. Camp a couple of times recently, and obviously, we have to have an arrangement, and you feel comfortable with, and you feel like it's in the best interest of the city. And here, if you'll elaborate on this just briefly, that if we win it alone, it would be more costly to us than agreeing to the terms that the Water Authority says they must have, or sit forward by their consultant that Mr. Camp is discussing this with. So we will be looking at, working with the Water Authority to be sure that they're comfortable with this. The difference this time around than what took place several years ago, is the Water Authority had the same job, and Mr. Johnson did a very good job for them. The problem was the city of Temple didn't have a bill camp giving that to us. And so I think that, my feeling is that the two organizations will be in their best position to get through it, but you can briefly, or just place something.
Yes, sir. I think that's a very, you make a very good point that one thing we'll always be able to do is compare options. One option that you have available to you is to have the city be its own issuer, and that would be for a water sewer revenue bond. So what you have now, and what we still believe is the best overall route to go, is the security for the bonds is your full faith and credit is everything available to you, but you're also going to operate the system. You're committing, promising to operate the system with at least a 1.05 times coverage. And that makes a lot of sense to do that way. When you are selling a water sewer revenue bond, or you're limiting that security to just the system revenues, and so generally speaking, you're going to have a higher coverage requirement, 1.2 or even higher are pretty standard for water sewer revenue bonds. And so, it is an option available to you, and we will always, I will be able to tell you and compare those when we look at these placements and these offers that we have. But just understand that the coverage would be something higher if we did a water sewer revenue bond issued by the city of Temple versus this intergovernmental contract revenue bond through Carroll County Water Authority.
So Mr. Osborne, because you and Mr. Camp are kind of going through this, and said, will we have a meeting so that we're all on the same page to know what we're presenting to Carroll County Water Authority, so that we have an idea even whether we're there or not, kind of what we're doing?
Yes, ma'am. And in a sense, we're doing that same type of meeting tonight to the extent that Mr. Camp needs to know that you're comfortable with what he's talking with the Water Authority about, so that, and Mr. Johnson's doing the same thing in the hierarchy with the Water Authority, so that as we move along, there's a coordination between the bond councils, namely Bill Johnson and Bill Camp. And so if you're comfortable with what he's talking about, then you'll keep working, and if you're not comfortable with it, he needs to.
Any more questions, discussions?
Again, I'm always available, and Mr. Osborne, obviously, y'all have great resources here, but anything, anytime y'all have a question, I'm happy to come to a meeting or just a phone call away to you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. And the budget financials start now with the number two, and two, three, and five, this tick is going to run, so there's no need, we can all read where we are. So I'm just going to let him go right on. You got it on mine?
Please put these in your book. Sure. Unless you got one. Put it in hand. Probably already. So we don't have to get some of that comeback insurance? On which tab does he go?
All right. So just hold on. Go with that with you.
Covering mode.
All right.
What is it? This is three, agenda items, so put it in front.
Actually, first.
Y'all put this, yes, I know. That's broken.
Can't see your first step. That's also going to show. Especially.
Go behind my note. Everything to get you. He has a note right there. Right there. It goes after. We're just going to get you another. Yeah, we need another divider sheet. I got another divider sheet. We need one, two, three, four, five, six.
It should go right after all. That would make more sense.
I think it just skipped the shooting into a pretty. Well, you're.
You will, aren't you?
We're getting a divider sheet to go behind this, so it gets separated. Well, most jobs do, apparently. But see, I'm missing a tab. This side of the table is on the wrong side of the track. Well, thank you for sharing it. We don't.
I know. You make sure you get your tab. I don't need.
This side.
Give it to me. That's all we need.
We're the deviants of the crowd.
We're good. I'm good.
Now, we're fine. We're fine. We're fine. Just.
Just so that I don't confuse that anymore on the book. This first page is a follow-on to what we covered in the public hearing.
The ones we were leaving between.
So you all heard the presentation for the public hearing, the SLOST budget, the capital projects worksheet is all under your first tab in the public hearing. This will continue the budget. So at some point, if you want to put those together, not right now, but later on, if you want to put the SLOST and capital budget worksheet together.
you want to put the SLOST, the capital budget worksheet on top of this, then you'll have a complete document. All right, Mr. Braggel?
Yes.
Okay. So at the last budget work session, so we'll continue on with the capital budget. At the last budget work session, we modified our worksheets. We're still on this page, Mr. Braggel.
Okay.
You modified our worksheets to move some of the projects from fiscal year 2019 to 2020. So here's your tracking worksheet for 2020 as we continue to plan. So other than introducing this to you, everything is projected like, like we covered in the public hearing. And then we will also, do we have a second public hearing before the November 3rd council meeting?
No. The second public hearing on, will be on November the 26th.
Okay. So we are going to move that public hearing to the next committee meeting. Very good. All right. So that, that completes our discussion on capital projects and 2015 SLOST budget. On the next page, you'll see a new budget sheet that we've never looked at before. And this is on the debt service budget. But we did say during our budget work session, I'm going to pull that debt service out of the water fund so it'll be easier for us to track. So in meeting with our finance committee members and in looking at our budget, what is, let me cover 2018 funds available. In 2018, we transferred 622,765 in the water fund. We transferred SLOST 2015 funds in an amount of 250,000. We also identified fiscal year 2017 SLOST funds and invested them in a debt savings money market account in August of 2018 in the total of 622,550. And the fund balance that is actually sitting in the debt cash account is 8,775. So at the end of the fiscal year 18 budget, after we've made the, we will have funds available of 1,504,090. Our expenses for debt in 18, as you see, 425,000, 425,000 of the principal payment. Our two interest payments, bank charges, the wiring fees, total debt service commitment of 622,890 for 18, which leaves a fund balance in debt savings of 881,200. So that's where we will start our fiscal year 19 budget for debt. And looking at our different options for the water fund and where we're sitting as far as the budget goes for the water fund, the best option that I'd like to recommend is from FY19, we use 377,040 for the water fund. We've already earmarked 250,000 from SLOST 2015. And FY19, I recommend using that 250,000 for the debt payment versus going into debt savings. You're still going to maintain your fund balance of 881,000. So with those sources of funds available, you see at FY19, 1,508,240. Your expenses is your principal payment of 445,000, your two interest payments, one due mid-year, one due at the end of the year, and bank charges for a total of 627,165. That will lead you a fund balance at the end of FY19 going into '20 of 881,75. So that is how we'll track our debt service requirements. And of course, if the debt and bond is refunded, then this will all change and be revised for our replant. Any questions? All right. The next page will be your water fund. And the summary page, the only changes that we've made is of course, if you're looking under the 19 column, is I removed the 250,000 from SLOST to water. And now it goes directly to debt. And we just saw that on this page. Fund balance includes the 312,000 for the meter replacement program. Under expenses, the only thing that's changed is the debt payment. It's now 377,040, which is the modified payment. And the other thing that I added, because we talk about fund balance a lot, and it's something that we need to keep track of very closely. And so I've added both the general fund and water fund. In fund balance, we hold 175,230 of customer deposits. So that's a liability. Those funds are held in that account until the customers close their account and then we have to remove that money. So the city is just holding those funds. So that is, that represents a balanced budget at this time. We'll continue to work on the details. And then our, our next budget meeting, I'll be able to update you at that time. But if anyone has any, just let me know. Okay. Just real quick, revenue, the only change from our budget work session is of course, I removed the transfer from SLOST. So our revenue projected as it is right now is a total of 2,495,366 and 39 cents for the water fund. The next page is sanitation. And this we discussed at the budget work session also. One of the questions that I had was how many of our water customers are garbage customers? We have 1,000, we build 1,928 water customers in the last building cycle.
1,928?
Yes, sir. We build 1,397 garbage customers.
1,000.
So we have at this time 531 customers that do not take that service from the city.
But we do not know if we're being charged for that because we don't really know who's got to wipe. If it's ever been picked up, if it's ever come back in.
Yeah, we're.
We're really. We really, that's not really a true number with what we've got at this moment.
With what we're billed from our contract waste company, we are auditing that bill every, every month. We've started. And we're getting that information.
So we're collecting, we're collecting.
But.
So we're collecting and.
We are probably an 18er and that's 14,000 dollars that the City of Temple has to pay for trash services. Exane. 14,000, around 14,000. That the City of Temple paid for garbage services above what we received in garbage feet.
1307, is that based on the number of containers?
Number of customers billed for service.
Billed for trash.
Yes, sir.
Including commercial.
Yes, it does. So we'll continue to look into this. I mean, this is something that obviously you'll want to address.
Oh, it's pretty.
Yes, sir. All right. The next.
Just got a. Let's go ahead and pause. And I would entertain a motion for us to suspend the committee's meetings temporarily until we finish the special call meeting.
Make a motion to suspend.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, everyone say aye. And you oppose the same sign. All right, we have one item under new business. That is to approve a resolution to adopt the City of Temple's 2018 to 2038 comprehensive plan following a determination by the Georgia Department of Community Affairs that the city plan adequately addresses the state's minimum standards for local comprehensive planning. The resolution for that is in your book, if you'd like to take a look at it. And this time, we would allow for any questions you may have of Mr. Osborne. And he may have a comment he wants to share before that.
Just very quickly, the comprehensive plan that I was committed, did a great job working on, but it was DCA identified that we were missing one component, namely Temple is included in the Metropolitan Planning Organization for Transportation Planning purposes. So our consultant, Paul Gerald, sent in information that let us meet that requirement. We also needed to make a couple of changes in the way we had presented some future projects and current projects. If you look right at the back of this file, you will find, go over three pages, right behind the resolution, you will find the cover sheet that you've seen before of the comprehensive plan that says revised draft. The only thing really that was revised in this draft, if you look at the next page on the table of contents, we did add a transportation page, that's page 27. The next page is that page. And then following, you will see the community work program. And we had a couple of things on that that we have identified as to be accomplished or something. They wanted us to just say in terms of this particular report that those had not been accomplished. And we made those changes last Wednesday, the 24th, we were notified by Mr. Gerald. Two things, one, that DCA had now approved our plan. And second, to remind us that we had a deadline of getting our plan approved, passing a resolution had to be done before the end of October. Otherwise, you go on DCA's bad list and are not eligible for certain grants, loans, and so forth, which is why I was rooting for you tonight in this question call meeting.
Yes, sir.
Make a motion.
Before you make any motions, let me read it out loud so it's a matter of public record.
Oh, I didn't think of that yet, sir.
Well, this, this is the resolution. All right. Whereas the City of Temple has completed its 2018 through 2038 comprehensive plan update. And whereas the updated comprehensive plan was prepared in accordance with the minimum standards and procedures for local comprehensive planning established by the Georgia Planning Act of 1989. And whereas two required public hearings were conducted on March 19, 2018, and September 10, 2018. And whereas the comprehensive plan was transmitted to the Free Rivers Regional Commission and the Department of Community Affairs for review. And whereas the Department of Community Affairs reviewed the comprehensive plan and finds that it adequately addresses minimum standards for local comprehensive planning. And now therefore, let it be resolved, the City of Temple Council hereby adopts this 2018 through 2038 comprehensive plan on this 29th day of October 2018, pending your approval. So there's the resolution. Now, Mr. Braggel, would you like to go?
Make a motion.
I'll say.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor of adopting the resolution that we read, everyone say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the same sign. Motion carries. All right, that completes the one item we had of new business. Not aware of any need for executive session, any closing comments for the special call meeting? If not, I entertain a motion to adjourn the special call meeting.
Motion to adjourn. Second?
I have a motion and a second. All in favor of everyone saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the same sign. Special call meeting is adjourned. Now I entertain a motion to unsuspend our committee's meeting.
And you're thinking, you didn't think.
I have a motion to.
Thank you, Tom.
I have a motion to unsuspend the committee's meeting. We have a second. All in favor of everyone saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the same sign. All right, we presume. Ms. Guyer?
Yes. All right, the next budget that we're working on, Mr. Braggel is the Water Distribution Department.
I know, right?
All right. This budget, we are going to continue to work on the Water Department and Sewer Treatment Plant expenditure budgets up until the very minute that we do our public hearings and publish the. But the one change that did happen is the water purchase and resale. Of course, Mr. Walden did identify a 5% increase from Carroll County Water Authority. So that has been changed to 399,000 in water purchase resale from Carroll County. But that did increase, well, is it 19, that increased 19,000. All right, if you'll just continue on Sewer Treatment Plant. Let's go past there. We're going to, like I said, we're going to continue to work on that expenditure budget. The water fund transfers, the change that we did make is we did zero out the allocation for shared costs for the administrative services to provide our water source activities. This is something that of course, you'll need to keep an eye on out the next year. And if you see that this is necessary, you can always amend the budget and put something back in. But right now, it is at zero. All right, that completes the wa, the update on the water fund budget. There's just a few changes in the general fund budget that I'll go through. First of all, on the summary page, it looks like that should have been right after your water fund. It was. All right. The general fund, the other thing that, that we added to this, all of the revenues and expenditures are pretty much the same as the budget work, work session, with the exception of dropping the expenditures from community development. So that budget has been zeroed out from 30,000 and zeroed out and has been put back into your fund balance. So we do have a balanced budget at this time. I identified, well, same thing with water fund and general fund, you have money in the general fund that has already been pre-approved and earmarked for specific purposes. So in order for us to track those, I have put them to the right. Real fast, the roadway improvement fees, 9,240 and 95 cents, those are committed for those specific purposes. The county's SLOST held in the general fund, the, you see the balance, 178,615 and 43 cents. And you have three approved project for senior center renovation, approved for a pay for the bid documents for the senior center, as well as the Recreation Department press box. And there, so all of those purchases will be made from the general fund. And it will come from the county's SLOST and we'll need to continue tracking those. That leaves a balance in the general fund of 44,732.93. And backpack program donations, as of last Friday, our donation total was 7,234 and 43 cents. And at some point, we'll need to have a discussion of that program and what to do with those funds. All right. If you'll flip through the administration budget or the revenue budget, sorry, on the first page, there was no changes. On the second page, the only change that we made from the budget work session was including the special election. And we added 72 dollars per candidate for qualifying fee. So we set the budget, the revenue budget at 575. So at this time in our process, revenue for general fund is projected to be 2,932,725. In the governing body budget, we also have expenditures for the special. in the General Fund that has already been pre-approved and earmarked for specific purposes. So in order for us to track those, I have put them to the right. Real fast, the roadway improvement fees, nine thousand two hundred and forty dollars and ninety-five cents, those are committed for those specific purposes. Uh, the county's loss held in the General Fund, the, you see the balance, a hundred seventy-eight thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars and forty-three cents. And you have three, approved project for Senior Center Innovation, approved, uh, for pay for the bid documents for the Senior Center, as well as, uh, the Recreation Department press box. And there, so all of those purchases will be made from the General Fund, and it will come from the county's slots, and we'll need to continue tracking those. That leaves a balance in the General Fund of forty-four thousand, seven thirty-two, ninety-three. And backpack program donations, add, uh, uh, last Friday, our donation total was seven thousand, two hundred and thirty-four dollars and forty-one cents. And at some point, we'll need to have a discussion of that program and what to do with those lots. All right, um, if you'll flip through of the administration budget, or the revenue budget, sorry, on the first page, there were no changes. On the second page, the only change that we made from the budget work session was included for the special, uh, election, and we added seventy-two dollars per candidate for qualifying fees, so we set the budget, the revenue budget at five hundred and seventy-five dollars. So at this time in our process, revenue for General Fund is projected to be two million, nine hundred and thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars. In the governing body budget, we also have expenditures for the special election that is in call. We added a five thousand, we added five thousand to that budget, so it fell to fifteen thousand. The next page is the administration budget, highlighted in yellow. Um, we did talk about express bill pay, and Cessault is also something that I've identified during the audit, is the necessity for the asset management module, and it will, it is a process that actually tracks all of your fixed asset inventory, your capital, land buildings, and equipment. It values them and depreciates them, and everything is fed in through the general ledger. So I have asked for a quote for that module, very important. So that did increase our computer services, uh, budget of fifty-five thousand. On the next page, contract later was de- was decreased to ten thousand. And on the next page, bank charges have been waived, um, I left a five thousand dollar budget in there for credit card, you know, I mean, wiring fees, any type of miscellaneous, but that certainly will change. Plus, you'll be renegotiating your bank services contract in June, two thousand and nineteen, so I'm sure it's another swell. Municipal court, no changes to that budget. Police Department, um, we had quite a lot of discussion in the Police Department budget, but, um, and I'll leave that for the chief to discuss with you during the Police Department committee meeting. All right, now, Public Works Department, um, I have talked with Duane, and, and, um, we did estimate, uh, two thousand dollars to logo and identify, uh, the City of Temple Public Works vehicles, uh, for the four vehicle, four trucks that he had in his department. So that did increase your vehicle repair and maintenance lineup to fourteen thousand. And then the Senior Center, we increased her electricity, utility, uh, expenditure line to twenty thousand due to the renovation and that addition of freezers, of the large walk-in freezer. Um, in the Recreation Department, a lot of discussion on salaries and the seasonal part-time people, uh, during the Recreation Department committee meeting, I know Mr. Osborne's gonna be covering some of that information. And, um, I will break that out once we've determined how we're gonna proceed, and I think we judge based on, um, you know, the pay per hour that's decided.
Did you determine the, the, uh, amount that they paid in season? Did you, you want to look at that?
It's seven, um, Chris and I both looked at that, but I kind of put the final numbers together, together, but currently, we pay seven twenty-five a column.
Right, but you don't know how many, how many employees we're paying, how much we're paying?
No, because it does vary. But we do have a report that will use us to project those numbers. I don't have to write, write this in. All right, library expenditures, we set at thirty thousand, and the last page, of course, you see the Community Development, it is now zero. And that includes the General Fund budget at this time. So with this, you should have a complete copy of where we are tonight on all three of your budgets. So what you had in your workbook from last week has any changes or reflected in this document, that's why I want to give you the whole document, um, so that you'll have it all together. With, with, in addition to this loss two thousand and fifteen and your capital budget worksheet that we handled in the public hearing, that will go on top of that.
Okay, the next thing is actually notice. You're gonna update us on the account report concerning our investment council to notice?
And, um, I did not hear back from Ray today, so I did, I tried to reach him. So at this time, I think, uh, prior to the November third meeting, we will have a proposal on any changes that need to be made on the action of...
Action of the Council.
Yes. Uh, the one CD that we have to decide at November third would be the seventy-seven thousand CD at United Community, because that does mature on November seventeenth, so we will have to take action, I think. But I'll update as soon as I hear from Sanovis, see what they're gonna offer. And our last one, who's updated on our, um, just in your office? The, um, I don't have, um, any paperwork or, or numbers to provide to at this time. Um, both of our auditors were here two days last week, and they have worked with the administrative staff, as well as I know they've been in touch with the Police Department on some reports that they were, um, needed. Roden will be back on Wednesday, we have a meeting with Mr. Osborne at eleven o'clock to provide some type of update, formal update at that time. There is some difficulty mapping the accounts between TBS and Cessault, and, I mean, seventeen's that transition year, and we had a number of months where things were phased in, so for the auditor to take that information and put it together, it's just, it is taking a little bit longer than we're gonna do that. So, um, we'll continue working on it, she'll be here Wednesday, and we're providing her all the information she needs, whatever she asks for.
So we don't know yet when it will be presented to us?
I do not know at this time. It, it probably, it probably will be the December third council, before it'll be presented.
Any more questions or comments? If not, that concludes the committee panel.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have Public Works Committee.
Okay, item number one, I've made a report in the city's roadway and infrastructure improvement project schedule, including the situation for Azalea Hills Design Concept Development Committee. I'm gonna, uh, just kinda take you through, uh, quickly, the, uh, information I have here, and then we may have some discussion, including with, uh, Mr. Pilkrim for the City Attorney's Office, but, uh, uh, basically, uh, uh, as you know, uh, we were looking on October the first on the resolution to apply our roadway and infrastructure improvement fee, both to the Azalea Hills subdivision and Lakeside subdivision, uh, and you toggle that item not to a specific meeting, you simply pay for it. Uh, and, uh, in looking ahead to the next meeting, we just wanted to give you an update, and I divided this in several parts, uh, one is that, uh, Mr. McRae has, has raised some questions about ordinance and its application, uh, and talked briefly today with, uh, Mr. Pilkrim, and, uh, we're looking into several things in terms of providing information to our City Attorney's Office. Uh, one of the problems that we do have, and it's not a new problem, of course, here in Temple, and we're trying to go back twelve, thirteen, fifteen years ago with information, it's, uh, it's, uh, somewhere between impossible and extremely difficult to find the records, but we are looking to see what we can find. Now, what I would request, I know Mr. McRae will be back in town, uh, at the end of the week, uh, and whether it's Mr. McRae or Mr. Pilkrim, I would hope that we could schedule, uh, some type of session, uh, with our City Attorney's Office prior to your, uh, meeting, uh, next Monday, November five. That meeting starts at six-thirty, as you know, so maybe we could meet, uh, before then, but that'll be something that, uh, the City Attorney's Office will ensure, Mr. Pilkrim and, and, uh, Mr. McRae will be, uh, talking about that. The ordinance, of course, to be held, had been put together before, uh, our current P. Attorney started working with us. Uh, the Lakeside subdivision, as, as you, uh, know, was one of two subdivisions that we had, uh, at your October one motion. While we did have questions and opposition from Azalea Hills, we had no questions, no opposition being spread, uh, from Lakeside. However, uh, Friday, I had a builder from Lakeside wanting six permits, uh, and I asked him to come back, but I expect him to come back tomorrow, uh, because what I did, I think probably, uh, we played, looked, said for a couple of permits, and don't wanna stop them, but neither do I want us to do a bunch of permits, and then to reach legal issue maybe come up, and they're not yet included by the fee, uh, so, uh, we've got some things that, that, uh, will need to be dealt with, uh, rather promptly, uh, because, uh, my feeling at the moment, as I say on here, is that I think your agenda for next Monday night, that you take the, uh, motion at your table off the table, and then you amend that motion by deleting Azalea Hills, uh, subdivision from the motion, so that you're dealing only with Lakeside, uh, and then I would, uh, I would recommend that you consider approving the inclusion of the Lakeside residential subdivision in this, in the same way that a few months ago you did Webster Lake to include in. Uh, but that's, uh, the, uh, so let me just stop before we get to Azalea Hills, and let that give you just a little bit of background. You know, we've got some concerns that, uh, our Attorney's Office had raised, and like I say, we're trying, uh, Kristin, George Cowell, myself, uh, to see what we can do to provide as much information as we can find for Mr. Pilkrim and Mr. McRae. Uh, but any questions on that, or Lakeside, and, uh, before we move into Azalea Hills?
If you did have to issue a couple of...
Go ahead.
If you did have to issue a couple of permits in Lakeside, and then getting an improvement fee on those, you just recalculated on the rest of the lots, less than the two or three that you issued.
Correct.
And that would probably get it all up to a maximum of point five hundred, rather than point three six five. So I couldn't see them then probably issuing two or three permits if that, if they exist.
And like I say, it would be my hope that I could get by with just a couple of sort of things and focus on that. Uh, I don't think that they were coming up here looking for six permits, trying to circumvent anything on the fee, I think they were simply, they're getting ready to build, and you just wanted to get some permits, so get started, so, uh, uh, the, uh, Mr. Pilkrim, is it fair to assume that, uh, that we can have some kind of session with y'all then?
Yes, sir, and I'll tell you, our goal would be to, to analyze and add, we got the ordinance in hand, um, would be to provide y'all some sort of a memo of this week, then it's the next council meeting, and then have a executive session for that, or, you know, be, it's a regular meeting.
On the Azalea Hills, if you will look past, uh, two more pages on our memo, three pages, you got a resolution, and then you got a chart, then you've got a diagram. If you look at that diagram, you'll see that, that as you come off of, of Cent standpoint Road by way of Venable Road, uh, then you would make a, you take a left off of Venable into Glendale Boulevard, and then go down, you'll see Glendale Boulevard and Morning Star Drive. And what we're talking about, and I've got it in the office, I did, I meant to bring it out with me, and I can get it if you want me to, or after the meeting, I'll be glad to share it with you. But if you look at, there are several lots, two lots on one side of Glendale Boulevard and three on the other, uh, and that is known as, uh, uh, Phase One Beat. The rest of this, the big section, which is about half deal count at this time, uh, is the Phase One, uh, and, and basically, uh, uh, Mr. Ever Harden and, uh, Mr. Scowler identified thirty-six breakout lines, uh, and, uh, now, we've talked before about, uh, this subdivision being a little bit different than, uh, some of the others, which just clearly had only the binder code on it, but as you know, we, we had our staff, says that streets are getting in bad shape, and by the time we get through with heavy construction equipment and construction of remaining homes, uh, to be sure that they will probably be in much worse shape. But I was contacted, uh, late last month by a man who's a property owner, uh, you can see his long name there, he does business as Mr. Finance Inc., uh, he had with him, as you remember at the meeting the other night, the younger man, uh, who is with a, uh, home builder, Wade Journey Homes, uh, and, uh, then, when I first had in contact with him, they were, uh, cordial, and they didn't want to look at whether or not they might, uh, do something with some type of bond rather than the fees, but as you know, when they came, uh, to our meeting, uh, they left us with a calling card, and I've included that calling card, uh, in here, and that's two, we've looked over about five pages, we see Constitution notice from Mr. Finance, two pages, we go over, you see Constitution notice, uh, from this company, it's a Delaware company, uh, but, uh, obviously, uh, they were, they were changing board to what I'd call a, uh, opposition contemplational type of, of mode. Six, and if you look over beyond that, uh, you will see we have open records request, uh, out of law firm, and they had given us a major, uh, request. If you read through that, you'll see it's asking for a lot of information, it requires a lot of work, going back to two thousand and three, uh, that was the reason that Pilkrim was here this afternoon, uh, trying to figure out, uh, what we've got, what we don't have, uh, so what I'm, what I'm making to you at the moment is more just bringing you up to date, uh, with this, the, uh, the resolution that we have included, and what I proposed to you, except that delete Azalea Hills and make it permanent only to Lakeside. Obviously, the situation with, uh, Azalea Hills is not gonna go away, uh, and, and as you know, uh, and as you look at that little map, uh, you can see that there's a lot more, uh, in this DCD, uh, than we'll be dealing with down the road, so, uh, but the only concern at this time about what's been, uh, shown in terms of vision, watch and everything. So that's my report, be glad to respond to questions, and ensure that Pilkrim will, um, respond, as you see fit, to anything you still have to talk about. Any questions on that? All right, let's do item number two. Report upstream improvement project, the intersection of Georgia Highway one thirteen and US Highway seventy-eight, and work by the Carroll County Public Works Department on the twenty-eighteen DPOT, persistent street resurfacy project in Temple, the February third.
The Georgia Highway one thirteen project in Temple, there are one, are there?
The, uh, as I've said to y'all here, they say they, they getting ready to start now, I mean, Duane, I've been living with this, this quick response project... I mean, Duane, I've been living with this, this quick response project for a year and a half, but I was assured by the district engineer that they would be started within two weeks. So by the time you have your meeting next week, we'll see.
All right, and as far as the LME project, they are completed. The only thing we wait for now is probably.
Now, I need you to talk about looking ahead.
Looking ahead, number three, Mr. Osman.
Identification of possible LME resurfaces project by the city of Temple elected official.
Now, in twenty September, I told you guys I'm going to release the document, submit that body to the September first. Now, what I did, we did the spreads, you could have them passed to you guys last year. Remember, we set three streets to be resurfaced and one was striking. But we did have a couple of streets that we actually came, came to the table where the streets that we wanted to see resurfaced. So if you guys want to include those.
Which ones were those?
Those were Temple Terrace, South Street, Matthews Street, and Old Street.
Do you have a copy of that?
Where did you, where did you get those?
Last year, you guys brought them on this one. And additional streets, I identify, I would really sleep there, so if you guys want to submit, I'll have to submit that by September first.
As I can take a look at all the way on the road, it makes some tension all the way from the elementary school pretty much up to Webster Lake because as Duane, please start developing that subdivision, we're going to need a good route.
Also, the, in Deer Run, I don't know the name of the street, but half that street is missing. Do you have any idea? If you go back behind.
Well, what's the road?
No, if you go back down to Jimmy Riggs.
Right behind you.
Deer, what'd I say, Deer Run, Deer Run. I don't know the name of the street. You know where I'm talking about, Duane? It's where it tees, there's a, there's a street with a tee seventeen.
Because we go back to the left.
Yeah, if you go back to the right, you go up on the hill with the houses there, you can go left or right. One is west and one is east, but it's, it's right there before you get to it. The half of the road is going, the mountain is over here at School House Straits.
That's what it looks like.
Yeah, it looks a lot like that, only it's just totally missing.
So just to add to the basis there or something?
Yeah, look at it and see, but that, that's a street that needs to be, you know, needs to be looked at and I don't know how big a position you can direct and resurface it, but.
So now I guess we'll go with Temple Terrace, we'll go to South Street, Matthews Street, Old Street, Ridge Street, Dell Street, over there, and that, of course, that you're talking about. And typically what I do, as you guys know, we get fifty-two thousand from DPOT, our thirty percent max, sixteen thousand, that gives us about seven thousand dollars per year. So what I do, I give the figures, we're paid for these streets and then we'll come back to the table to select.
We need to take a look at Over Street, right there in the curve where the buses stop.
We have holders.
Okay, that's kind of fast washout, the asphalt keeps breaking off. It's a real deep ditch right there. Somebody can easily run in one end and down to beat it. But that's, that's the end question. Do we have it prioritized?
I mean, do we have it prioritized? No. Again, we put on our LME do this and that, no, they'll get on, probably in the end of twenty nineteen, like everyone right now. And I have the cost, because again, I got these lengths, but of course, I'm pretty sure that asphalt price, I, I would release those.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Duane, when you get through all of your reports, you'll just make copies of that and bring so they will have, what we would allow for your meeting the next Monday is that Duane, during the cost assessment, so you're talking about, so as you look at that before, you'll have several projects that he's talking, where you're about to have, you'll have some idea of this cost assessment. He told you about what you're going to have in terms of the rate of funds, so you can do kind of mix and match as far as you've done before. Any other questions?
I saw a little bit of road that been done and also they did written today, a little more than others.
Katy Street. We did the parking lot over there adjacent to Temple Farms.
Yeah, yeah, I've worked about the, the schoolhouse.
Katy, all the way to Katy.
So I'm working on Katy Street. All, all of the ones that we submitted last year, those are, I said, the one, two, Katy Street, Rook Street, and again, I'm, I'm helping them out and start.
Regarding Katy Street, I was contacted by a homeowner over there today who had concerns about the transition from their driveway to the street, that there was a little bumpy. Is there a process or a way for that to be evaluated and looked to see if maybe some-
Can you give me the address while they're here, because they still have, you just paid hours in place.
Okay, okay, all right, forty-two Katy Street. And I may have another one after the meeting, or I'll give it to you tomorrow.
Duane, if you would, in the morning, just ride Katy Street and just see what you see too, with Mr. Mayor sitting over there a couple more. The other, just Duane mentioned Iverson Place, the last page of this damage, your book, is the letter that the mayor sent to the residents of Tiffany Hill subdivision. We can deliver those letters on Friday, just letting the road that Iverson Place was being repaired and resurfaced and we'll handle that with our roadway fee as y'all approve over the rest of the money, basically coming out of the general fund to be repaid as, as we get additional fees from Tiffany Hill. But that's important.
Based on the recent funding from the county, that you can start that, that project tomorrow.
A little bit of a delay there. Anything else? Okay, item number four, report on October twentieth river cleanup in the city of Temple Falls, community cleanup day.
Had to clean up on the twentieth, this was last Saturday. The event was a semi-success, the drainage that they actually filled up one of the dumps of harbor pool. The river could be a dump on Monday, they committed twenty-four bags based on the port of, they did, that's what they got. Again, the mayor was collaborating, they were very proud of that, they dumped over that area.
The, the report on the river cleanup said the most unusual thing they found when it cleaned up was a carcass of a baby alligator.
Really?
Really. I don't know what the, considering baby alligator hell is.
I didn't see that.
Okay, item number five, report on replacing the current roof on the public, old public works department building.
I think Mr. Osman provided two, two posts that I did related to a painting. The original one, I gave you guys back, I think in September, and that was prepared. The other report, the other proposal that I was, related to a channel from West Jordan Looping. And as you can see, the price of that is twenty-nine seven five first of the, nine four thirty-five that we got from the road.
What is the big difference?
I'm like, you guys, a little bit of a wish to go to the quarter minute now, and they were looking at them either build up or sloping the river back, so they will give the extra funding and, and running them down. Then we'll be having some patience to cover the gaps when they did the elevation.
That's the big, what else? Yeah, KRD was going back to the flat, the flat roof.
And kind of gave you that.
Yes, good.
Did we find out what the handling, the numbers were there, nine four thirty-five? Question mark five, KRD under there, quote, nine six eighty-six. Mr. Osman, there's nothing there in his name, and he didn't say what it was.
Yeah, I think, I think the actual ending quote was kind of what I said, nine four thirty-five, seven, nine four.
Say that again, Duane.
The nine four thirty-five, seven was the final quote, not the nine six eighty-six.
And I, and, and that makes sense, but I would tell you that if you add up the numbers that they present, you get, if I add it up, you get nine six eighty-six. So we do need to get an explanation from, so if you get that, we've handled four, so that one's enough. Any other questions on that? Item number six, staff report on reading water.
Does anybody have any questions? I think Mr. Osman provided a, a letter as far as, you know, some of the mediating factors of water.
Duane, can you just, can you just kind of tell me how that takes place? I mean, is there one person that has all the meters and he's never pulled away for reading meters to do anything else?
Well, during the meter reading cycle, we started at the beginning of the month, but after, every time he reaches a route, he tells the building department, actually there, so if a four, there's rain, he has to go back and actually read those. So you won't have any lapse in time to turn over the readings. So that's kind of a little delayed.
But he's not pulled off of that to go do any other project?
Not even there for superior waters.
Yeah, having said that, as, as my report said, the other times it was meter reading, that you may have something comes up related to meter reading that you asked to make.
Like water wars, storms, and things like that.
And the other thing, and we had a deja vu today, is one of our problems, last time we got, got two meters and one of them broke.
Two handhelds.
Two handhelds.
One you can get purchase.
And we had to, had to send it off to be fixed and that took about three weeks. We just got it back, so my report says now we got two, so we can have two. Guess what happened to that?
The brother.
The other one broke. So we got to send it off.
So does it need three?
Just being of the word.
Well, so it's consistent now that basically the meters are being read pretty much within a couple of days of each other.
Right, right.
So that there is consistency in the reading.
Except, Mr. Brinkley, and say here, that things sometimes happen. We had people that were sick. We had, you know, we had more rain than we've been having. I mean, you get all those things mitigating against the routine schedule.
Right, but what I'm asking though, if the meter reader gets sick, is there something, do you shift someone to do his job or do we have to wait until he gets wet?
Right now, he hasn't been sick. I mean, there's a, there's a long term, if he's out for long term, a week or so, yes, I would definitely put someone like that in this office.
The sickness this time was our utility billing party and of course, the meter reader and her work together, they're trying to move the process along, but she's not here. When he gets through with the route to work people with processing, then that's something you have to do.
We don't have anybody cross-trained there.
She's the only one that can actually load and unload them. So she's out.
And you?
That, that probably would be great.
That would be a plan B. I mean, it's a word of the department, wouldn't that be something you could learn?
They're probably, yeah, they're probably would be, they can't control that.
We need to do that?
All right.
I've got all of this inconsistency for months. I mean, there was back home in just two, three, four months, just been calling and you can bring it up holidays, vacation, short staff, equipment. There was one, look, bring up failure to the weather, but all other municipalities are having the same thing, they have the same water, the same holidays, the same vacations. So, you know, none of that can be easy or excuse. But I had pulled at least one bill from each route of eleven routes and I never got the rest of the routes because they didn't rid it. And here it is, the twenty-third day of the month, we got two more days to do billings. Bills need to go out this week and how many routes do we have that they rid yet?
Based on that, makes it up to two weeks today, but it should be through tomorrow.
Okay.
So the bills would still go out this week.
We've got a pan wheels down.
Pan gear went down today.
So is that going to impact the bills?
Well, there's, there's one that I moved in route, route one, okay, this, my square three, there's twenty-one days of water service. The one before that is forty-one days of water service. The one before that is thirty, thirty-four days of water service. So, and here's one, oh gosh, this one goes on the next several months. Okay, here's, there's thirty-nine days already, forty-one days, and that's one, thirty-three, thirty-nine, twelve days, thirty-two days, thirty-one days. Okay, we got a fifty-day movie on this one, all the way from July the ninth to August the twentieth. So they will build fifty days of service. The next month after that is twenty days. Okay, this last read of twenty-four is thirty-six days. So people are having trouble budgeting their, their water bills. We've got this rate that we go by, a residential, those customers will try to keep theirs under sixty-five hundred gallons to keep from having an increase. And some of them are very hard trying to keep it under, but if they don't have an extra seven, eight, ten days on their bill, they're fighting a losing battle. But on residential, the water and sewer, if they go over sixty-five hundred gallons per month, their bill automatically increases by another three dollars per gallon for water and sewer connection. So those are the kind of complaints that I'm getting, is where I can't weekly consistent.
The other thing is along that same line, if there is, if, if we, if our commercial customer, it kicks up based on the amount of water they're using, also affects their debt, their debt service payment.
Right.
You know, if, if it's below a number, let's say it's a hundred dollars, because above that number, it's two hundred dollars. So if there's a week in there, it, that's a significant amount that person's going to have to pay.
Probably the one you're talking about, if he goes over, or if that business goes over twenty-five thousand gallons per month, off, then he's charged another hundred fifteen dollars just on the price rate on his water only.
But I'm saying, you know, if there's, if there's, if there's a few days, yeah, but if it's, if it gets over a week, that makes a real discrepancy because your usage is, is up for that and it's down for the other. That passes back and forth. It just, but you're saying that now that it's, it's fixed?
I haven't, he has not been communicating with me that.
It's a problem.
But I talked to Mr. Osman about it. Mr. Osman has adjusted people's bills, he's adjusted commercial bill, more than once, as we're talking about, he's adjusted residential bills, so that's a problem. It's been for me, Mr. Osman, it didn't get to be, I'm sorry, but I'm going- But I'm going through the proper channels. So I think we need more than one person out there helping. You know, if you've got a man reading meters and he's seven days behind, we don't need another public works employee taking our burden, because he's got nothing to do in that same day. You know, he needs to be out there, in my opinion, helping the guy catch up on reading the meters.
So to keep it relatively consistent, that keeps everybody a lot happier.
Well, they, they, and they, this is what others got yesterday.
One of them is fifty, sixty, eighty, three. Well, it comes back, one of them got fifty days, but it's a little bit of it.
But that also, that can also impact our revenues and our bonds and stuff too. If we start losing businesses because we're charging them a hundred fifteen dollars each and one month if we don't have a water, a water meter. Adjusting bills is fair, but it's going to be hard for us to keep that rate and keep the water department up there if we're playing twenty and thirty and fifty.
But the next one might take care of it though.
We would ask, ask this, that's part of this, for sure. But I don't, I don't think we're putting enough emphasis on the, the meter reading and billing being consistent. To me, that's just as important as getting out here fixing waterways. You know, it's just got to be, it's got to be, it's consistent. And these excuses, that, that aren't, you don't have to deal with it. You know, it's not, not just technical. So I think it's, you know, I think upper management problem, you know, or upper management protect it a problem.
Well, how come we haven't changed water meters? How many water meters did you change in that month?
Two, three. Change is not what's happening now, it's all the building, it's installed.
Is all our water meters on handhelds? Do we have any, we have to get out and actually read?
We only have, we only have a hundred and fifty that I read.
Who's got the laptop yet?
On the radio.
So, but you're just replacing meters with a standard meter, right?
Radio.
Was that, I was kind of, I was kind of shocked when I came in the other day, and my wife said, somebody's out there busting in our yard, you know, watering his water, and come find out there was a meter being changed. And I just thought, how much does those meters cost?
That radio?
No, when's it your putting in now?
That radio, it was a that radio.
How much is that? Sixty-five dollars. And if we come in here and change that meters?
Radio reading is sixty-five dollars.
Right, but that sixty-five dollar meter reading is common trade in that.
It will be spread.
Pushed correct?
Right, it is, it will have to be, it will be scattered, doesn't matter if it's planned.
I know, oh, okay.
Water meter replacement, uh, in new homes, water, water, right, directly direct.
Because it all depends on what kind of meters we get.
Well, it do depend on, I mean, right now, we're, we're putting up stuff that, we have selected a vendor.
Right.
Oh, we close something out?
Just go ahead.
Oh, my, my, my.
Any more questions?
No, but I would, I would love for you to just kind of run that. Stress the importance of that regular reading. And if you jump in there and help, because, you know, the complaint level goes up big time. Every time it goes over a week, that means they're going to have a short one, and they're going to say, I mean, you know, they're going to have a long one or a short one, and they're going to praise you one month, question you the next.
I do have another time to say back, before we had all these residential water meters, when we probably had had, it's been a question about, we still had two people averaging meters. You know, they got it done within possibly five days.
So there have been, since I've been here, it's only once or two, two or three weeks, yeah?
I mean, we've never had this issue.
Not him, I mean, Jesse was on one.
Well, they should not take a thirty-day cycle to read the meters. I, you know, it's, it's just a vicious cycle, it's just, you know, never you call it. And if we've got a guy out here getting behind, we need to throw in some help out there. He's just saying, hey, just get up and get it done, but it's hard for one man to drive and get out reading meters, get back in right now. Rather than, you know, and just keep repeating the same old thing. But it, it doesn't seem to be important to, to staff that we field somebody for an extra seven or eight days on, on the bill. I just don't give it. And I would like to see us do better job with it. And, you know, I understand some, some things happen, just like the handheld. But, and the weather, you've got to deal with the weather, everybody deals with the weather. But if a meter housing is full of water, you know, maybe they need to take a little butt and move and get it out. So they don't really need to, but that's one of the things you got to do with it. I'll leave you there, I hope it gets better.
Anyone else? Okay, out of number six, staff report on reading, no, I'm sorry, seven, staff report on purchasing new water meters to drive.
I'll just give you a brief report, basically, which was mentioned the other night. I'm working on this, I expected that that is wrapped up in that, I have it. Hopefully, we will soon. What has been decided by you as we look at this is that we would send the R F P to what we call the big six and water meter manufacturers, and then they would decide what the screw they could, uh, would be involved. And I've got most of the information, I need, uh, need to talk again with, uh, my contacts into the Carroll County Water Authority if they've sent me it, I'd be say, just to be sure that, that what you put out with the R F P is objective, one of the problems of, Wayne had a good, uh, uh, R F P, but when you looked at it real closely, it was from Mueller, I think, uh, and so everything in there was aimed at their specs. Uh, now you could talk about equivalent, but our try to, to get in, uh, the, uh, the other thing is that, uh, hopefully, that as we move, we finish up this process, and we will, uh, next couple of contacts in Jeepers, we'll be meeting with them on Friday. Uh, because certainly for hope that they would, uh, would, uh, either through some type of grant, low interest loan, to help us in terms of the cost of the site, so, but, uh, I will make a very high bar for myself in no weather, because I know that you have access to move on with it. Staff is also.
Any questions?
And that for, for the, for the building and the readings.
Exactly.
If you get the right piece of equipment, you can flip a switch, you can switch here in the office and have everything.
It decreases your revenue a lot.
Just to rephrase, everything.
It was eliminated personally.
And probably nine, ten things.
You got one person that you're.
Probably sure, that's the worst person.
We are.
Are we advertising for that one, or?
Yeah, well, yeah.
Currently, is it on the website?
Uh, you know, basically, the job market's better, and we're just going to get out.
And what is the base scale of that one?
You, you bumped that up to, like, thirteen dollars an hour. So the better than you work, but you still, competition's tough in the process.
Are we advertising just the Carrollton area, or?
I think we put it on the Carrollton area, I think.
State.
State. I think we give it on the.
Yeah, we did deliver.
I have one more thing.
Go ahead.
Did we make a decision, are we going to earmark money for these? I know you guys, I like the idea, but we never did come to a consensus, but we want to.
We had, we had a little suck, a little bit of a base.
Yeah, I think.
I've been working, wasn't enough to cover it.
I think what we were, what we were left with, Wayne, if I'm not mistaken, was that we're going to seek local competitive bids to see if it gets the same thing done locally in cheap. That was my understanding, wasn't that right, Mr. Bracken?
Well, if I, we, we.
I think we got, we got some local, we got, that was kind of, we also got some local company right here in Temple that deal with the same thing, and I think what our kind of expectation was, was that that be, to seek them out and see what we could do locally, I did, but we wanted to see if we could do it locally and get a little bit cheaper. Does that make sense?
I think so.
Yeah, we can, we can.
The second, yeah, because I say.
What we're probably need to do is, is just add it, and go over the third, the rest is to, to do that, so we got.
Can we do that to the need, to get us additional, additional estimates?
Well, I think probably take official action, because we do, basically, the director, the U S P solution, so. Maybe that's all the agenda, something like that.
Anything else?
I mean.
I have to conclude.
Thank you, sir. Everybody good, water out, go on, or you need a break? Good? All right, personnel committee, chairperson, Mayor Profen, Richard Bracken.
Governor Gordon, you're appointed with this City of Temple's new finance director.
There are two parts that I have in the memo, but of course, you have Dr. Amy Day, who you look, and this is Nancy. Uh, you'll go with the second attached on under this table, seeing a lot of, from me, the information from all the state university. Uh, that, basically, uh, back on October forty-sixth, I noted in the memo to you that I had received about a hundred pages of information from all the state university from this personnel file. That was my Sunday morning reading yesterday, but this is, and, uh, two points, uh, after you had interviewed Ken and, and had agreed to select him to be the finance director pending the outcome of my, see what I found from all the state university, uh, that, uh, he did came and told me a couple of things he thought I would find in his file, which I did. Uh, and one of those had to do with some issues with the supervisor during the time that he had had a couple of surgeries and having some health problems. Another one goes back to about sixteen years ago, where you had a problem, uh, that he was recommended for. I would make brief statements, uh, his evaluations, annual evaluations, uh, were, were very good. Uh, and even though the supervisor had, uh, didn't, uh, uh, take too kindly, I guess, of, of, uh, Ken not working long hours, she, he, he took a while to recover after surgery. He subsequently got a promotion at all the state, which, uh, so bottom line is, and I, as I told him this morning, that there was no smoking gun in his file, that, uh, so I would, uh, say that based on his review of his file, that he would be good to go from that standpoint. Uh, he's here, uh, today and the next two days, that we had made arrangements so and so time ago, thinking that Cynthia Guy might be not available to us after the end of this, uh, month because of, uh, what her career path might be taking. Uh, what I have given you, of course, is she has looked ahead and, and is, uh, has said that she would make herself available for ten days during the, during Thanksgiving, and that would be, be a transition time, uh, with the new finance director as well as when he gets back to all the state on Thursday morning, he's got to give two weeks notice. Uh, because until we got through, uh, yesterday, we'd be reviewing that file, I didn't know what I was going to be reporting to you today. Uh, so, uh, I would, uh, you've already agreed to employ him at a specific amount, unless we found something in his personnel file, and I did not find him, so that would cause us to, to change from, from him coming to work as finance director here. Uh, and the transition, uh, what this guy has given you, I put in this memo, specific days that she's prepared to commit to. I would urge that on, uh, Wednesday night, you approve the extension of her contract, as she's proposed. Uh, because the next two weeks, Ken's working at his notice, budget process needs to be moved at full speed ahead. So anyway, that's my report too, I'm sure that Ken's available, questions that you may have, we may have a couple of comments for you. Uh, and we don't need any further action on him, as, as far as I'm concerned. Uh, but would like to lock him with Guy for, for these two days.
So that would just need to go on the agenda?
Agenda, yes. Any comments?
We get those two weeks done, we don't have to come.
We'll wait, don't we?
We'll wait.
So we, we still have to write the file, don't we?
Uh, uh, you're fine in terms of him.
He's hired.
He's hired.
With Cynthia we got to deal with.
Cynthia, we'd like to, to have the extension approved when, when you, for her.
To work with. The good, the good news is he's been here all day, and he can run out the door and, and run up, and he runs out.
He's still talking to us, isn't he?
Yeah.
So that's, that's my report.
All right. Good day.
Okay, so add that to the, add that. Uh, this is report on the City of Temple's recent work with G M E, oh, about what, was there anything else I'm sorry? Uh, concerning insurance provided by the city for its employees. I think there's a memo in there for this.
I'm giving you a, a memo, what we did, of course, is you're well aware, have a situation with an employee that, uh, certainly appreciate the work, uh, that Randy Logan and his staff did with us on doing a retroactive coverage of this employee, so that that issue has been taken care of, and Kristen and Cindy are, are more making sure that, uh, we're checking things, and we will be on a monthly basis, just to be sure. Uh, that, uh, we also found a couple of employees that didn't have the life insurance, uh, and that's been taken care of. Uh, and, uh, and basically, as I say at the bottom of the note, that they, we, we will be applying, as we look at all of this, and sometimes we make assumptions, a fellow who used to work for me, he said, never assume anything. Uh, and I think that's a good lesson for us, but bottom line is, we, we have a problem, that you were aware that there was some social media comments, but we were able to work for it, but it was Gmail, didn't work out, and so we're the next square away from this.
Fantastic, thank you. Any questions? All right, number three, uh, I think this is also, the resolution is in your book to look at. It's just, uh, uh, wanting to make sure that it's okay that this be put on the, uh, agenda for next Monday night. It's a report concerning the possible approval of a one-time holiday season payment to eligible full-time, part-time employees. Last year, it was, uh, we had, as you can see, uh, gave a one-time, uh, amount to all full-time employees, uh, half of that to part-time employees who work at least ten hours a week. Does anybody have an objection to that going on, the, the, that resolution going on the agenda?
Is it in their budget, or is it in the general budget, or does that money be a problem?
The, uh, excellent question, and I don't have the answer. Cynthia and I, we talked about that today, uh, we will have a. Cynthia and I, we talked about that today, uh, we will have a specific figure for you for Monday night.
We have to know which budget it comes out of.
I can't, I can't tell you right now, uh, that, uh, the six hundred dollars may be doable, I can't tell you. That's what you did last year, uh, but it may well be that before we come back to you, or maybe we will give you, uh, what we think you can handle from a maximum standpoint.
Yes.
My other question is, what are we doing? There's two different proposals in here, but you said there's a revol- a resolution.
Well, there's resolution for both. What it was last year, I, I, what I was talking about last year is what we decided to do was on the resolution that says, and then the other is a resolution that was also a proposal last year that, that was to give, uh, what was it, a week's pay.
Frankly, I'm, I'm strongly recommending we give all of our employees the same one as well.
That was, that was the reason we didn't go with weekly one, because there was such a variation that, that that could be too great. If we designated it out and exactly what it would be, we could calculate it out, know exactly what's what, everybody would get. The only thing that we had trouble with last year, Mr. Osborne, was we had some people whose anniversary date, the probationary anniversary date, was falling pretty close into this. That might be something that Kristen would not need to know, if we got anybody to make sure, you know, we missed somebody for what, ten days? And, and I think we said that last year, we actually said it later in the resolution.
We can't, we can't change that. Can anybody show that?
Well, we voted last year to make exceptions to that.
You could, uh, I mean, basically, you could, could put it and make the, the, you might do it if you were for a less intention date, if you wanted to do that.
We just make sure that there's nobody coming under that, but we also make sure that we specify the number of hours so that it wouldn't be, if somebody that works, you know, an hour or two a concession, you know, several times during the year, wouldn't be eligible, they would have to work, like, I think the one we're about to talk about, recreation works twenty or thirty hours a week, would be eligible.
Our seasonal, we.
Seasonal does not, part-time does.
Part-time does.
They have to leave ten hours, they, they had to work a minimum of ten hours per week every week.
Best I remember last time at the constable, it was about twenty thousand dollars.
So this guy will have that, make sure we do that. Any other questions? All right. Um, the next is report on the recent current activities or files the City of Temple's employee handbook. That is ready to go based on everybody's comments, uh, we had a little bit of issue with us being able to email each other, so, uh, got the Karen, and her concerns are going to be addressed, and then I will give whoever comes out next week from, uh, the law office to give it to and go within the basic chain. Does that sound like a plan? Okay? So it won't be on, but we're hoping to be able to have it on the, uh, the December, the December meeting, because we want the changes to be made, and for everybody to have a chance to go through that and make sure that's exactly what we want, so, all right? And next is a report of the city attorney's office on the filling of the vacancy on the city council, which has been created by the recent resignation of Todd Rothwell. Will you answer that?
I, I can, I think y'all saw the memo, uh, from Mr. Osborne as well, to basically lay down our, you know, thoughts on that, which are that we might have a special election in March to fill that seat based on the way your charter reads, so that's what you gotta do.
We got a date on that, nineteen.
March nineteen? Changed to March nineteen?
Well, I think the second weekend in January is where that day.
So that vacancy's got to sit six months before it can be replaced. I see the kind of bears of, of that difference.
We can't, we can't afford anybody in the, the legislature for my selection.
I'm just saying, it seems kind of, six months without representation. I guess they'd call you later. Five months. Okay, that's it?
Thank you, sir.
Any questions?
All right, well, that brings us to the public safety committee, chaired by Councilman Howard Walden.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Number one, have these announced during the regular council meeting on Monday, knowing that a special commission will be given to the police officers on their efforts to handle child, and it's not a real incident, and she's leaving to tell us what is here on the middle.
Dylan, that I spoke to you, Mayor, last week, with Monday, preface this time that we got special certificates made and framed and everything, so I can bring those over right before the council, we want to sign them and date them for every parent, and then we give them to them.
Yes, sir.
We've got your public safety reports on the inside.
All of the public safety reports that you got, too, anybody have any question about any of this knowledge? I'd like to also add addition, that's something I had in hand, I've been giving these out for quite a few years, uh, the call volume, where you're looking at, where it says, uh, dispatch calls, uh, one thousand sixty, that number will change probably about thirty-five or to sixty, because we can add the calls that we get that come to PD, those are calls too, that also have to be dispatched to PD versus somebody dial nine-one-one to pick that phone up in the lobby, that dial's nine-one-one, but you got Shaw Marie and Tina Duncan there messing the door, and we have to call officers three or four times a day to answer calls that way, too, so, but number's gonna be a little bit higher than that. Still have a few cases, uh, open on investigation, dealing with child crimes, I don't know if y'all have been watching the, read the stats, uh, this, been, uh, Texas is doing an awesome job of bringing in these pedophiles and everything, uh, sex crimes is here in Temple that we're not aware of, but this is crazy, we're doing the best we can, and we're making plenty of arrests, so I can tell you, just keep an eye on them, and they'll detail what this is.
Okay, because unfortunately during the holidays, it goes up.
Yes, exactly.
Did I have something else I wanted to mention?
We don't get one.
You want one?
We need one more. All the same. Okay, this, the sheets that just passed out to you guys, uh, this is starting December thirty-first, two thousand fifteen, and I just went just a few years back, this is a reference to, uh, the increase when I was speaking about judges' salary for an increase, because if you look at the certificate numbers, how they change, look at two thousand fifteen, December, citation's filed, you see twelve hundred, then if you go to two thousand sixteen, you see fourteen seventy-three, then if you go to two thousand seventeen, the next one, you see nineteen ninety-eight, and, and this year has still had finish, and we're gonna probably top out two thousand, and it's two thousand eighteen, so that's a huge increase for court for the same pay that he's been on, so that's why I requested. I also did some checking, too, and I spoke with Cynthia earlier, uh, there's no contract, the judge don't have a contract, never have, the thirty years of doing it, um, I don't know how we're gonna go about doing this, but, uh, I just wanted to show y'all the changes, and also the increase that the days that we had in court, it went from, we used to have court once a month, something like that, at five o'clock, and it went from that to two days to four sessions now, so we actually added another session to them, so we doing a session, like, every two weeks we do court, we do at nine o'clock to one, to one-thirty, and, well, nine o'clock to eleven, and then at one-thirty to whenever, and that, whenever can be, trial can last to eight o'clock at night, sometimes, sometimes, I mean, we had, the latest, I think we said so far this year, might, might have been about six o'clock, six-thirty, but it could last long, because we had this one trial, uh, last week, one trial lasted two hours on traffic, and this wasn't a DUI, nothing like that, but, so, you, you, you put all that to play with along with what we've been giving him this salary for years, that's why, he never mentioned anything about it, I'm just trying to do what's best for the city, and we keep what we got going.
Mayor, when you move from every other week to once a week, didn't we, didn't you give him a raise?
No, well, he's been in that salary, to my understanding, I think he's been in that salary since two thousand, I wanna say two thousand, two, something around that, two thousand ten, ten, I don't know, hold me to it, but I think that's how long he's been in that salary, but we've been flip-flopping, building to, from, to the OPD, to the library, to C C C building, back to the GM, I mean, it's been flip-flop, but, uh, but the courts has, like I said, said mainly since this, uh, construction project just started, the numbers have changed dramatically, so even if we had have done something, just say recently, uh, you still looking at that number that, that has increased, which you still got a person saying that they gonna do it for the same thing.
I got a question for you. Is it my understanding that for, if you get a practice citation, say it's meeting or random stop sign, you have to go to court, you can't pay that ahead of time?
Not necessarily, some things you can pay, some things you can't, if you're under twenty-one, sometimes it's mandatory, you get treated, the judge wants to see you, something like that, anything different with alcohol, he wants to see disorder conduct, stuff like that, you have to pay out, or something like a seatbelt, stop sign, stuff like that, you can't pay out, but in certain speeding tickets, you can too, unless you have, uh, you get superspeeders or something like that, then it's mandatory that you have.
Where would you pay that here?
Or either you can wait till it's time to come to court, or you can do it.
Okay, so then my question is this, if we've got an ordinance or whatever that says he has a contract, but he's not under contract, we just go over the ordinance, we read the bases? Or the charter?
Now, whatever we do is going to have to be done by ordinance, another government council, because when Mr. McCrayer retired, that's when we had the mayor that did all the hiring, and that, that, you talking about O three?
Did someone run out there, O two, O three?
They had the charter changed in twenty-ten, so now we've got to comply with the current charter, which says that, uh, this compensation is set by the council, and it has to be under ordinance, so we'd have to do whatever we need.
So we would have to do an ordinance to bring it up to charter, or we just grandfather him in, uh, because he was here, I'm, I'm just, I'm not sure.
Change or save his compensation according to the charter, with the actual ordinance?
But also, if we go by the, but if we go by the change of the compensation in the charter, does that mean then we have to give him a contract? I mean, I'm just trying to figure out where these lines are crossing.
Well, I, I would try to give contracts, and most, I would think most attorney would own contract, almost gets, would, like, Bob would provide their own contract.
He was hired under the old charter. We're not doing, to my knowledge, we're not doing contracts at all, but we, we, just matter of fact, I just, uh, back here, what, seven months ago, we started, we just got a, a public defender, and the only thing he comes into is, is over pay for, to agree with what we're gonna pay him, that he's not gonna charge us more or less, or, you know, whatever, and that's the only kind of binding contracts that we have, but not nothing far as saying, you gonna work for us for five years, under this mile line, or this many years, or whatever, so, I think that's just the way the solicitor's doing it, the judge is, everybody doing it, it's not nobody coming in telling you they can stay.
We got, we got, we got a charter that tells us how to do it, if we're gonna, if we're gonna do it.
But, but what happens, like you said, you got this in place before the charter be adopted, that route.
But he's got to give you salary.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, if you're, you know, we're asking him your salary.
Yeah, I understand.
Wait, if, if, if he grant, if he's granted, didn't have to be done by?
Yeah, what, whatever his salary is, even if it stays the same, we need to have an ordinance that, that sets it out, just so that you can apply your charter, if you, so I don't know what it can handle.
And the judge served at the pleasure of the mayor and council, the principal of the council. Are they removed again, please?
So is there, is there an amount being proposed?
Yes, sir, I did propose, I had.
Is that in here?
It's not in there.
I thought it was in the budget.
It was in the budget, but I never knew the amount.
That's what, that's what I did, I didn't know.
I never knew the amount.
I was, uh, thirty-six hundred, which is three hundred a month, and I said three hundred times twelve, which is thirty-six, and I thought that was pretty reasonable.
Uh, is that all you needed to say or share with us?
From the judge?
Yeah, yes, sir.
Uh, just wanted to leave a note for you to review, the parade route that's being proposed for the Christmas parade, December first, there are basketball games going on at the Temple Gymnasium, so we're trying to avoid that area completely, so what we proposed is for the staging to occur at Temple Elementary, and then the parade route would be come up Odie Street, come down Sage Street, turn on Carrollton Street, and end at the First Baptist parking lot, so y'all will kind of look at that and, and let us know if that's gonna be okay, and as soon as possible, you know, next day or two, if that's possible.
Yeah, I get with you tomorrow.
And, uh, so we can, you know, the committee can go ahead and get plans, vitalize on, on all that, and, and then the area where the, the celebration and all, the boothing is gonna be set up, it's gonna be similar to what we had for the street dance on February night, Valentine's Day night, uh, will be concentrated in that area, behind the library, and in between Carrollton Avenue and Carroll, and Carrollton Street.
We're just closing, I'd like to be advanced.
Yes, sir.
Are you all ready for Halloween, Wednesday night?
Yes, sir, I've got, uh, we got, uh, probably six to seven officers gonna work, uh, including myself, and, uh, we're gonna do the trunk or treat, uh, for the two churches here, and as well as Freedom Baptist, so I'm gonna be at both places, uh, back and forth, and we're gonna have other officers on regular patrol, but we're not giving them candy and Halloween stuff, I've got Temple PD, Golden Adour Braces, I got like a thousand of them, we're gonna pass out to all the kids, they're different colors, at the same time we do the trunk or treat, so.
Are you ready for it?
Just real, I think, just real quickly, I just want to put a council on notice, assuming that we approved the Capitol voting, uh, regular meeting next Monday, the chief has got some color, and he's been retired, so I don't, I don't want to wait next year like we did this year, which is, uh, because the York Southern Gym, and we still want to have them on regular year, and so.
You got one car, almost two hundred tiles, and you're still on the road?
We got some, it's getting probably, if we could, for the.
You know, I can say, uh, you know, that's a lot looking for, for the apartment, when you gotta also run the code in the car, the drive shaft break, I don't know if anybody's working, I'm not working, but aware of what happened here, uh, about a week and a half ago. There was a car traveling north of one thirteen as it got to double D, the tire rods broke on it. And it got off the road, and I thought about patrol cars, and this car wasn't half as old as what we were trolling. The tire rods broken, the tires went out, the only thing stopped it was that, I guess, that nut scraped on the ground. And then, and they was hit the interstate, they'd sit in for the interstate, so they would've been on the interstate, they would've had something to do with that. So that's what I get to thinking about with these cars is officers going to high, you know, high nature calls or something like that, and the tire pop off the car, maybe, because the hitch could be good, but it's gonna be that metal, and you never know when it's gonna break, being that old, anything could happen, so. Uh, we do have uh the cars that's supposed to be ready, I'm gonna get in touch with them tomorrow, see when they're gonna ship them to us. Uh, I guess they want to ship them the same time to the one, and then wait two weeks later to ship the other one. So he gonna need to hold both up to the other one, get ready, they gonna bring them to us, and then once they bring them to us, we gonna send them down to Metro Poppy. So hopefully we should have these at Metro Poppy, I'm hoping by first we get them done.
Chief, one thing, uh, I don't, after the like trunk or treat thing that the churches are over with, in some of the other subdivisions, I know at Ivy Lake, you can't move. I mean, there's women, children, and stuff down there, but if there's, you know, somebody can just kind of.
Well, I have an officer there. And we focus on the big areas, you got other people trick or treating in different areas, but the area that has the most of high traffic is gonna be Ivy Lake, Amy Ridge.
Bill Rose that time.
Yeah, but we can handle those because there's a lot of in and out on those, but I know the ones that come to a halt is Ivy Lake and Amy Ridge.
With one at Ivy Lake, you only have one entrance.
Yeah, yeah, that's for sure.
And so it really jams up.
Yeah.
And it's hard to, I've never seen so many kids go a lot, every year.
We definitely have officers there, and like I said, I can get others to volunteer, I didn't want to make it mandatory, but there's a lot of overtime kicking out when you got all these officers and all these other events that we have, that's what happening in overtime. You think you got each event, everybody's requiring security, and then I got two or three officers working over, and this go on two or three times a month for a red, for any type of special thing you have. And then we do for replacing officers, it's all sucked up there, you know, that's all I'm trying to tell you, we ain't got no overtime left. But we'll have somebody there, I'm be well prepared for it, because I I just want to say, give us the kids as well, you know, after, you know, we'll have officers catching calls, and then I'll also just be present. I told them, hey, we'd like to know, so everybody knows the police on every neighborhood, pretty much, so we need someone to render aid somewhere here. And then we can break free at any time, that's something really nice, you know, I just have to cut out, definitely have to get appreciated. You know, also, we're in the process of, we got uh Galls coming down to fit us for the vest, and we still got that grant, and that grant is we paid for the vest, and then once we show them the proof of what we paid, then they gonna reverse us back, I think fifty-nine hundred, something like that. So whatever we spin out the budget, I bring that check back to the city and deposit back in. As well as we still got Lisa working on that grant, I'm aware of that. And I told her, she said that that's, I told her we could wait till they got that money for that grant, that we gonna go ahead and make our move. But she said, once they gather, get all the money they can get, they gonna still bring it to the city. She said, we can buy uh bulletproof shields with, anything, get whatever we need, when we don't need, deposit back into the city, deposit back in for uh equipment budget next year. So that'll help us out a lot too.
And what money is it?
The what now?
And what's money?
From Lisa, we don't know, it's gonna be donations from churches and stuff like that, that's what she do fundraisers and stuff like that, and they get back with us later, uh but I just told, we had to go ahead and make the move to get it. We already had that in there, I think we put this in the budget uh for this year, and I just had to spend it yet to figure out what we're gonna do. I was trying to wait, wait till this grant day, and they finally kicked in at the last of the year, so that's what we're gonna have to do. But I think that'll be all good then. Also, who was I looking at? No, I took one of the cars, uh so I was thinking, I don't know, uh, we uh, I didn't add it on the budget at all, just want to bring it to y'all's attention, that it, we're well in open for K nine. I'm quite sure everybody here probably feel the same way. We had one, we less, and one I'm just wanting, it's not a attack, I just want the dope and the tracking dog, non-aggressive. But it's kind of liability on, you gotta really have a big department, you gotta have a specialized unit and deal with it when you get the bite dog. But I just want one for tracking, and so my car, and that'd be good, happy to sit in, it's also determined, because what happens is uh you got people knowing that you don't have one, they try to use that ride to come to your city to get work to somewhere else. In other words, they see you out on I twenty, accounting and everything, so they take a certain, hey, you get it, we ain't got nothing to pick them up on, we stop the car, but I mean, we got certain ways to get in one, but sometimes it don't always work that way. If you don't have that right property car, you won't be able to get in there, you gonna beat your case anyway. So uh with that dog, that's a, a good determinant, make people want to determine from coming through the city at all. Plus, we can get more dope off the street, which is easy to get out. Stats, every time I pass a stat now, we make the dope arrest all the time, I'm not even putting some of the credit on something here. But we are doing what we can, we can't get it all, but we had a K nine that showed up us a lot. Plus, when we had this tracking, like some other person, one there off, or a small child, one there off, we can go ahead and put your dog in on. Because we did have one kid this in uh last year, and we almost had to shut everything down, but we ended up finding one. It was a little four-year-old, five-year-old, one it off, and he was gone for an hour or two, and it was getting dark. So and 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 sometimes you call these other agencies, they, they visit, they're not gonna send one. That, that's probably, they probably would at times, but we didn't get to that point where we had to get one, we found a kid. But sometimes you need a K nine and a bell.
Bill Ricker have a K nine?
Sir?
Does Bill Ricker have a K nine?
Yes, sir. Bill Ricker has one, uh Carroll County has one, uh Douglas has one, everybody has one set for Temple and not, I know smaller agencies, but we need a, Brayden has one too, I think, I'm not for sure, but we need our own. Uh, right now, we can get one, a grant would probably get us one with just the, paying for the officer and his training, would probably be like four thousand, three thousand dollars, but and usually they give you the dog, but if we just had to go straight out and get one with the dog, the training, everything all included, we looking at fourteen, fifteen thousand dollars just for one.
We got a lot of upkeep in there, we got that check, then you got that, hell.
It, it's not, well, if you got them already set up, it's like, I got a couple officers that, uh, one that was K nine in Brayden, he's already got kennels and everything, that wouldn't cost us anything. And upkeep of the dog is no different from a regular pet dog, and matter of fact, it's even different. You don't feed this dog like you do, you don't feed the dog like you normally just keep it bowl full. You give this dog cups full of food per day, that's the way it is. And he's only this dog appears kept with the owner, not anybody else who can't keep him, they have kids and stuff. You know, they competitive and everything, but he has to stay with that owner, because that's the train that dog, he commands with that owner. So I mean, it's not a lot of upkeep like you would think it is, Mr. Walter, but it's not that much, not at all. But we do have to get a kennel uh for a car, which we got the SUVs now, the explores, they come packaged already for it. Only thing we have to do is put that bottom part in. Okay. It'd be something up, I just want you, you know, throw that at you and let you know uh what 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 the plan is here, because I, like you said, we got the safe city twice in a row, and 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 never ever happened before, and I want to continue on and get it, and that's something to be thankful for too, you know. Hey, it could be worse, but we do it. I mean, you got five hundred something plus municipalities, and we selected out of fifty, two years in a row.
That we're looking with that kid?
I don't know, might get a year next year, I don't know. It depends on how the FBI and the stats, stats and stuff come in. You know, they go by your crimes and solve, what you solve, what your report is, they don't go by what happens there. Just say we had a armed robbery every day, every other day, as long as we apprehended somebody, that's all they look, they look at that as well. So this is, it's a combination of things that they do to get you that safe city and all thing, and then that's pretty, pretty awesome, I think. But there's a lot of agencies been out there, Douglas, no, uh, nobody in that county ever got, nobody in Carroll County ever got it. So it's a, it's a good thing, two years in a row. So with this K nine, Mr. Walter, I'm telling you this.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Next, I'll be the venue, is the fourth, uh, municipal office, uh, Mr. Scala.
You do have a tag, but you have all that, that'll be next day.
Well, we have a, not a, too big of a month, but we did get our first, first court case just courted, and that was out there at one sixty, and we were, they found a guy, you need a hundred thousand dollars, twenty-four hours community service, and six months probation, you got twenty-one days to get it done, or the judge has done a viable probation from the jail.
So you get a community appeal for it as well?
That was a, the big thing for the week, we got another one on sixteenth of this month, which is three forty, zero roses place, it's a burnt out house over here. We got, we finally got a girl, we believe, and she says she's gonna be at court, so we'll see about that. Um, we started going to our father compliance, again, people are supposed to submit a manifest about basically every three months, and it's been about four months, so we put out a, a letter saying, please, send us your manifest. About six people, six persons responded, the rest didn't, so now we're gonna send out, we're gonna write you a citation manifest, if you don't respond, and get, get your manifest sent in. I'm sure Dwayne will tell you, Greece is one of the big problems in our sewer system, and try to do it, so you can get that. Let's see. Well, we have Milner Street, abandoned house on Milner Street, I got ahold of the owner, and of course, we put a condemn sign on it, and so he got ahold of us, and he's working, he wants to redo that house. He really wants to rebuild that house, and I said, okay, but you gotta start doing, you gotta do something about the front end, front end of it, and make it look formidable, and show progress, you know, we gave him thirty days to start showing some progress, and.
That's the one on the corner?
That's the one on the corner without the porch. So I got a phone number and a good address for him, so he can't escape right now, we got it. And then uh on the back page, you'll see the Casal software. This was the uh, I believe we budgeted for that bill, twenty thousand dollars for Casal. Well, we got some good news uh from Casal. When we originally approached them, they quoted a surprise set of twenty-four thousand dollars. And then uh we said, okay, instead of getting a complete package, we'd only get the code, code enforcement package. And then they quoted us a eighteen thousand dollar price. But we went back to them and then spoke to them at the plant, and decided we could get not only the code enforcement package, but the permit package, the license package, and the integration package, which helps everything talk together. Say like, if business has something, hey, this is wrong, they can send it down the code. The permits has something, they can send it down the code, and we'll talk back and forth. And uh as you can see, we got that October fifteenth, uh we got that, we have ninety days. We'd like to probably get that on the calendar for November, that way we can get this maybe implemented by January, that we were up to speed.
So that's going on, quick now, that'll be a change.
Ready to say, ready to push it?
Yes, sir. You know, what they're gonna do for part of that includes, they're gonna take all of the tax registry information, including Carroll, Carrollton County, Carroll County, and integrate it into that system. And so we have all the information with what, owns what, and you know, from houses to lots to businesses. And with that, you know, I have a problem with a, of a location, we have, if you pull it up, has forms, a uniform source and everything like that, so that's down on the table significantly. Kristen, do you want to talk about the permit module?
Yes, I'll talk a little bit about the permits. Um, we did a demo on this last week with Casal, and I sat in on that, and I really think it'd be great for our permitting department. It tracks when someone comes in here to submit an application for a building permit, it tracks it through the whole process of us sending the plans every Carroll County, get them reviewed, if they come back, we need more information, everything's tracked in the system all the way to issuing them their certificate of occupancy. So it traps it online through the whole process. Right now, we're doing it kind of paper and pen, very old school, and we really need to, I believe, update our system and our ability to do things online, especially with all the inquiries we've had in the past several months, with all these builders coming out, wanting to start construction in these subdivisions. We've also had a lot of phone calls and interest about some of these business properties around here, and it just feels like Temple's about to start booming with a lot of activity. And I think it's very important if we have this online system, innovative with Casal, because as George was saying, it all kind of works together and speaks to each other, and it'll better give us the opportunity to track what exactly we're doing. It also gives us the ability to put in the builder's email and their information, so you can send emails through Casal with them to update them where we are in the process, what we still need from them. Again, the way we're doing things now is paper and pen, and I guess it's been working ever since Temple's been here, but with the um what seems to be the up in uh, you know, businesses and residences and domain coming up, and with us having such a small staff, I do believe that this would really help us to be able to better serve our citizens and help businesses and builders that are coming in to jump in.
And thank you, Kristen. And I think that that concludes, unless there's any questions, that's pretty much all we have.
I have a question, you just opened up a thing to the one of the board to uh attend this G D A C conference.
Oh, yes.
I was trying to get Dustin from Soul.
Right.
Running the school.
Right.
I saw something, I thought it worked for three days.
Clint Davis, go on to one.
Yeah, I hope, yeah, that's, that's, yeah, we're getting, trying to get that scheduled up, I'm working with Dwayne on it. Uh, Dwayne has some other priorities to.
Is that like a one-day thing?
That's a one-day thing.
But I'll let you go and talk to him.
No, no, um, it's like Dustin's already gone. Now, we're just waiting, you know, after the holidays, probably, probably missing a year, you know, we got, Dwayne has a lot of stuff on us, so we gotta coordinate with him before any of that happens. And the Gates Conference was the code enforcement of the conference, that's a really major conference, I learned quite a bit.
And then back at questions for Mr. Scala.
Thank you, sir.
And that concludes the.
Thank you, sir. Bring this to Recreation Committee?
All right, we'll do this quick. All right, the fencing, you gotta have, we need to have that put on the agenda so that we can decide about the specs to get that right.
We had, if that's what you want to do, Mr. Bennett, that's a guess, that we do specific, and get, and get bids. Uh, incidentally, Mr. Wilson was not here tonight because Mr. Collins had a death in the family, and so Joe didn't have anybody else available to work, so I told him, we take care of things here, he take care of things in court, so. But uh, we can put this on the agenda, uh, what you had said is that you want to go forward with the fencing.
Yeah.
If you're ready to do it now, or what, the first of the year, money's the same as from so much as we go now.
Yeah, having the, just have, so we get the specs, put it on the agenda. And along that, along that same line, from Monday night, we were talking about, we're going, moving into number two. Any other questions about fencing? And number two, before we get to the actual part of that, we're doing two things with park maintenance and the service for next year. Uh, the first part is, we talked about, kind of extensive in our budget meeting, about naming, identifying uh the part-time employee, naming the, a job description for him, putting him on the pay scale, which would raise him from uh seven twenty-five to eleven twenty-five per hour. So we'll have to prove that same as anybody who, you know, up there with six days, just goes pretty extensively. So that's put on there. Then the service contract, the second part of that is the service, the maintenance services in calendar year two thousand nineteen. And that's the same thing, is that we need to solicit that.
What we're done with.
In the past.
Same thing, you've got to talk to them.
Right, so that would be on the agenda to solicit, to give the approval to solicit that. And then the third thing is update report on getting Sandra in the kitchen dinner third cooking. Yeah, update report on construction addition to the kitchen area of Temple Sandy Center. Come on up, Sandra.
We should, Sandra wouldn't know what I'm about to say. But, uh, hopefully we'll have that worked out very soon. The, uh, I talked, uh, today with our attorneys office, but also talked with, uh, A B Construction and we got two changes we need to make in the contract, which I think we'll get that taken care of. And so hopefully we'll be able to start work within the next few days. So we don't need any action from the council, we just need to, uh, be sure that we got the contract that you already authorized and got worded correctly.
Anything from you?
No.
Well, awesome. Then this is, this is open, we're ready to go to the community developer. Thank you, Sandra.
You're welcome.
I have a question.
She gave y'all a leave of you, that's a good thing.
Yes.
And I think we're on to nineteen, but I want to hold you for stuff, see you home.
Yeah, thank you, sir. All right, that brings us to the Community Development Committee, uh, now chaired by Councilman Thomas.
Okay, Adam Underwood, report on city's temple plan, city of temple plans for Thanksgiving, the Christmas parade, and the entire holiday season of Christmas.
Okay, so everyone should have two different flyers that I sent out your place today. We've got one for Thanksgiving and one for the Christmas parade. Mr. Blackstone designed that one for us and got it to us a couple days ago. So we've got our two flyers ready to go for the next event. As far as Thanksgiving, that's pretty much already taken care of. Mr. Bracknell has been involved in getting that ready and he's working with area churches. I know that he sent out a packet about a week or so ago, which was a letter to all the churches inviting them to participate with us by donating possibly some turkeys or some money or their prayers or whatever they choose to do. And we send them a return address envelope so they can send back to us, you know, if they choose to help us and how they'd like to help. So that's actually taking place on Thanksgiving Day. We do need volunteers, so anyone that wants to help, you don't have to sign up, just show up at the senior center at nine o'clock A M. And there will be deliveries of meals, so if anyone knows of people that need meals delivered to them, that's an option and anyone is welcome to come. Mr. Bracknell, do you have anything to add about Thanksgiving?
You did a great job.
Okay, so moving on to Christmas, we have just started, um, last week, the special events committee met and we're in the process of getting our Christmas event set up, which is gonna take place the first Saturday in December, which is December first. We are having a parade and as the mayor mentioned earlier, there's some basketball games going on that night at high school, so we're trying to coordinate with them to not have too much traffic or any issues. Um, right now, as of right now, we're planning to have the parade start every five o'clock P M. After the parade, um, Santa will drop off at the library. Um, he'll be there and the children can start visiting with Santa. Mrs. Collins will be there reading stories, there'll be cookies and hot chocolate. We're also adding some different events this year that we did not have last year. We're gonna try to partner with the area churches. Our committee members have already started speaking with them. And we came up with a list of different events or booths that we would like to have at this festival and we're asking the churches to participate. Some examples are fasting. We've already had one church commit to doing marshmallow roasting, so we're gonna have like an open fire roasting marshmallows. Some of the other, um, other events were, may possibly allowed creativity, possibly doing Christmas crafts, possibly having a Christmas shop where children can buy gifts or get free gifts for their parents or family, bouncy houses, snowballs, and possibly training. So we have a lot of different options and we're hoping that different churches will sponsor these different events and there, there's actually things to do besides just the Christmas tree lighting and parade and that'll keep people around a little bit longer. And we're hoping to have the Christmas tree lighting when it gets dark, possibly between six thirty and seven. I think that's the goal for that. So, um, we are hoping to have a lot of community involvement with our churches or any groups that wanna help us participate. But we don't want it to be when people are trying to sell things. We want this to be giving back to the community and just offering some fun things for the children to be with. Do y'all have anything else to add to that?
Well, one of the things is we're also looking into hiring a DJ
Yes.
to set up equipment and play holiday music in the area about where folks be milling around to provide a little environment.
Is that all this, you want it to take place on Sunday at the parade? Are you starting early or maybe what's that?
No, it's gonna be in those, in those two hours.
In those two hours?
Yes.
Between five to seven is what we're thinking. And also I forgot to mention that some of the local students are going to have their choruses coming to sing, um, Christmas carols, I believe. So that's another way we're getting the community involved, I guess. We're thinking between five and seven.
It'll be a Christmasy thing.
Does that include the mayor singing Christmas carols?
Yeah, he's gotta be a solo player.
I thought so.
We haven't discussed that yet.
Oh, we've got, yeah. Is that what it was?
Okay, questions? Number two, report on Temple Plan Commission tabling of the rezoning request for property on the corner of State Street and U S Highway seventy-eight.
The last pass in your book, discussion explanations, just wanted you to be aware of that and, uh, we are working with them to get the, uh, questions answered. The next meeting of the Planning Commission, which this will come up, which will be on, uh, Tuesday, November thirteenth at the senior center at seven thirty P M. That's my report of that. Okay.
Number three, staffs report on the work by the Temple Plan Commission and the mayor and city council developed and adopted development code for the city of Temple.
Just wanna remind you that that meeting will be at five P M on Tuesday, November thirteenth at the senior center and, uh, we'll be getting your Allen memo on that, uh, reminding your chapters that will be discussed at that time.
Yep.
Thank you, sir. All right, this time, Mr. Dawkins requested and was granted permission to speak to the council, so Mr. Dawkins, if you'll come, join us at the table, please, and, uh, share what you want to share.
I really don't know where I wanna start, all right? So I'm gonna start with Megan Christie. For what she did for me. And since it's real fresh on everybody's mind, and Mr. Walton and the others discussed it with him, the water bill and stuff a while ago, I'm gonna change my approach a little bit. I never understood why it's so hard to get a water bill, to get it right. I've never understood that. Someone has got to be in charge. Someone has got to read the meters. Someone's got to transfer the numbers and the bill is treated. And if the bill ain't paid, says you're gonna cut it off. Now, maybe I'm missing something. As far as the meters, when y'all were telling everybody the meters, the bills were high because the meters were crazy and they was running the bills high. But then at the second water meeting we had on the water bill, Mr. Walton said that, uh, Carroll County told him if a will, bill went bad, a meter went bad, it would read low. Mr. Phillips said the same thing at the same meeting. And yes, I got upset because of everybody telling the people, bad meters give high bills. There you said bad meters give low bills. Well, is the material where they up or down? A meter is so simple to check. I mean, it's as simple as just getting up and falling in the floor. Have you ever watched the state check the gas meters in the pumps? They turn that pump on and they run the water and the tank, uh, gas in the thing till they get one gallon, three gallon, four gallon, however many gallons they want to check. And then they look at the pump, see if it pumped that, if it calculated the price right. Why can't you do the same thing? Why can't you take a five gallon bucket or get a major gas game, turn the faucet on? If it reads five gallons at the meter, then it reads five gallons on your pumping. The meter's right. If it's not, it's wrong. As far as the technology that Mr. Becknell was speaking about, flipping the switch and bam, everything's right here with us. Evidently, someone hadn't checked that technology out. Because if you go and check on it in the different towns that use that technology, they have just as much trouble with that giving bad bills as they do with the meters we got today. So if you, we got people building around the town. And we don't have new meters to give, to put in. So why not buy the best of the old meter? I don't know how many people he's got in the water system to read the meters or whatever. But if you take the money we're gonna spend on meters and getting them put in, maybe we could hire five, six employees for three or four years for that amount of money. Hire enough people to one day they read every meter we got in the city. The rest of the time, those on the employee are changing meters, checking meters, cutting grass, doing whatever the city needs to do to be cleaned up. So why sit here with a switch and flip a switch when you can hire five or six people, give them a job, and everybody needs a job? And then look at what you have. Then you're controlling your meter, controlling the water, you're controlling, controlling the people that are doing. I mean, you don't have to worry about one time they Matt put a fixture on where his meter was three or four inches under, under dirt, but it had been read for a year. Those people that are going out there looking at those meters every day to read them whenever and changing them out, they clean the meters as they go. When they go around and read that meter, they write down every meter that needs attention. However many, I don't know how many, uh, we got, I don't know how many routes we got or how many meters runs, but all of that is, to me, is very similar. I didn't unders, quite understand what you were saying about some of the meters, some, I think it was people paying the bill, some days it was this late, some days it was that late. Well, according to the water bill and according to the last April night or whenever it was, when we put in a new water bill system, it defines all of that. Who is in charge of seeing that that's done? Tell me, who's in charge? Who is the final say-so on that ordinance of a water bill? Tap fees, who's the final person? If it goes wrong, who is the last person that's supposed to catch, catch that? None of you don't know?
Uh, we're putting the words directly, the senior administrator.
Well, that's what I was gonna bring up, that was the next thing I was gonna ask. And it appears from fourteen to now, we've had a lot of senior administrators. I went back and read in the minutes and I don't find nowhere in the minutes that any council member presented the ordinance, presented a motion, presented everything, anything, to bring our water bill pay up to where it's supposed to be to pay our note. From fourteen to now, it's never been, to my knowledge, I haven't seen it. I did see where we took out fourteen dollars and something, which is roughly two million dollars to date. Why aren't we putting it back? Miss Billings is the only one that's ever made a motion to save money. When the lawyer told y'all here a while back, and I think Mr. Osborne, said at that time we were up to two five, two six, somewhere in that neighborhood, to one point five or whatever. And he suggested that y'all go up even more because you would get a better interest rate. What I wanna know is, Mr. Osborne, I haven't heard you, and I go back in minutes and I don't see where any administrator advised these council members, you need to raise the water bill. We're at seventy-two, I think, it's the first time I heard you mention it. I heard you mention the other day we'd be at a hundred and five or better. I don't know where we are. Why aren't we at a hundred and twenty? Why are we looking at repaying this bond off? Mr. Biggins, did you have a chance to run the numbers that I asked you on the, on the thing? Or did, what did you come up with, if you don't mind me telling you?
The same ones you did.
What?
The same ones you did.
Right. See, if we take, if you take the numbers that we got today and you increase, Mr. Walton was complaining here two or three meetings ago, well, if we raise it a cent and a half, it's gonna be this. Well, it don't matter what it is. We got a bond effect. Why extend that bond for ten years, however many million dollars it costs or however many hundred thousand it costs, when if you take, the county told us they was gonna raise us twenty percent? I think somebody come back and said it was only gonna be eighteen, this, this one. But instead of us dropping from one point five back to eighteen, why don't we go up to twenty-five? Why don't we increase the water bill to twenty-five? On everybody, not just the residents, on businesses, like I said before. It to me, the business, Klein J has thirty thousand people a month to help them pay their water bill. I have one person, you have two. One, I don't know how many people, Mr. Walton's got two, most of us have one or two people. So it's my understanding, if you raise this water bill, yes, there's people can't pay it today. They say they can't pay it, but can they really not pay it? Is it because they don't want to? It's like I told Mr. Todd, and he's not here no more. He said his water bill was ninety dollars a month. He's got three in the family. If you go to Klein J, when I drove truck, it's all according to how much I bought as to how much it costs to take back. So it pays three in the family, thirty days, that's ninety baths. And this water bill is, if it was mine, it would be a dollar a bath, but his is only seventy-five. So it's costing him however much for seventy-five baths and the rest of the month the water is free. If you explain that to every citizen in Temple, that ninety percent of the time your water is free? Mine's free. I pay forty, fifty dollars a month, that don't bother me at all. In fact, I wish y'all would take the senior citizen out. I wish you'd put back the fourteen sixty-six that was taken out of debt service. See, there's things y'all can do today that when twenty-one comes, boom, you could pay that bond off and not strap the city. Yes, you'd have to go to the people, you'd have to tell the people, we gotta do this because in the past, we had people that didn't stand up, weren't accountable, and didn't do what should've been done. And the only reason I'm here is for one thing. I had a lot here, but I'm not gonna show you, but one thing. I had a lot here, but I'm not going to show you, but one thing, if I can get it out. And I've got one for everyone, I'll get things. Pass them around, please. Split them, let it go, please. I'd like for anyone that wants to explain that to me to tell me why I have not received those open records. I think that's three eight, wasn't that what we're doing? Would anyone like to give me an answer?
Well, the city administrator, I would respond because it would have been my responsibility to see that you got that, and we obviously dropped the ball.
Well, Mr. Osborne, that's what you and I had words about the other day when y'all wasn't at New Town. And I'm sure I was harsher than I should have been. But when you tell me you're going to do something, I believe it. I'm just that dumb. Christie knows it. I probably asked you during this period three or four different times in reference to those particular thing. I don't know why you dropped the ball, that's immaterial. Uh, it's been dropped a lot of times. This one, I was one sixteen, and I changed the date on it to three oh eight. This I got, Samantha gave me this. English, there's several businesses that are not even listed. The First Baptist Church is not up here. Why? Why would you have a printout of the water bills that wouldn't have these names on them? I would like somebody to tell me.
Mr. Dawkins, are those just commercial things?
Uh, they're supposed to be both here. Supposed to be both, some of both. It was non-commercial, it was commercial and non-residential. And, uh, there's about six or eight different names. I didn't, I didn't print them. I asked one time for the same thing that I just asked, and this is what I got. I asked for the amount of money that was, I mean, amount of water that was purchased. And I asked for what was billed, and this, this is what I got. Uh, this all I got. And I looked at it, and I tried to figure it out, and I think I spoke to someone that referenced it. I don't know that it did it. And you know, it really boiled down to one thing. And I'm so disgusted that ain't nobody sitting right out here tonight. Because it was talked about on Facebook. It was, I put it on Facebook to say that anybody come could speak. Mr. Andy, he's not here. I thought he'd be here. Because I asked him to repost them, because when I posted it, it went away. And I think I don't want it, went away, but that's still okay. So, those are the things that I want to give y'all. Yes, sometimes I do get very upset. And the last thing is among mention is when you mention something to the city or to Mr. Wallace, I called him about a house up here on Johnson Street that he been working on. I called the city and asked why there's not a permit out front of this house. This person's putting the roof on it. He's tearing the deck back off of it. He's putting siding on it. He's racking it. Why isn't there a permit on that bill? Tell me, why ain't there a permit? And I, and I asked him about it, and I think I asked you twice.
Stop work order.
Right, yeah. I don't remember just exactly what come up about it. But said there was no permit on that bill.
Work and stop.
Yeah, there was a stop work order put up. Yeah, there was a stop work order put on after we talked.
Right.
But up to that point, they were working on it. And that, that, I, I didn't realize it was, but I kind of knew that that was out. Just a little thing that every one of y'all should see. I see them, the policemen should see them, everybody should see the thing. Take, uh, and Mr. Walton put the sign up for me. When I moved over, I, like, that East Johnson sign has been down, what, nine, ten months? There ain't no sign there. You put it up one time, or had it put up?
Had it put up, yeah.
Yeah, but it's been gone ten months, or I don't know how long. The police ride up down that road? You ride up down that road? Drive into post office, into the post office. When you got trees growing in the parking lot and huntersucker going in, and you got mud this deep in the back of the parking lot, somebody ain't doing their job. Whether it's the post office, or the city camp, camp, city council, somebody ain't doing their job. And that's all I'm, that's all I'm worried about. Yeah, there's a lot of things that went on in this city. And when I saw our policeman on Channel Eleven saying he didn't handle any insurance, I didn't know what to think. Since then, I've heard that y'all have taken care of it. I hope you have. So, that's what I got to say. Right or wrong, good or bad, y'all got to do what you got to do. Because I done done all I can do. I've done all I can do.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
All right, that brings us to closing comments, the business.
Uh, yes, if, um, there's a family, well, a senior, they think he committed suicide. They found him yesterday, about eighteen years old. The last name is Dan. I would ask if I could keep that family in here for him, because he was a senior.
Mr. Walton. Mr. Bracknell?
No, sir.
Nothing at all. Mr. Attorney, anything else you need to share with us?
No, sir, thank you.
All right. Thank everyone for coming tonight and entertaining a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn? Oh, where's the, we don't have to adjourn here. But make a motion to adjourn.
I don't see, I'm all, I've been confused about that. Do I hear a second?
I see.
All right, all in agreement, if you don't say that.